The meeting will come to order. Good evening, and welcome to this Monday, August 3, 2015, regular meeting of the Mercer Island City Council. We begin with a call to order. Karen, I'm sorry, we did that and go to a roll call.
Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brom.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zero.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Potmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Grous. Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. Thank you very much. Let's see, next up is appearances, but before we go there, I want to make one announcement to everyone, and that is that tomorrow night is National Night Out. So this is an opportunity for you and your neighbors to get together, get to know each other, an opportunity to build community, build neighborhood through connections with those around you. The city is hosting a National Night Out barbecue, I guess, at the Sculpture Garden from 6 to 9, and you are most welcome to attend that if there's not something happening in your neighborhood, but I would encourage you to contemplate putting something together at home with your neighbors if you have the opportunity to do that. Ed, I know in the past we've had folks who have set up barbecues, announce them to us. I think you must have a list of that since you mentioned that you're going to be out this week.
Yeah, we do, and it's through our emergency manager. So thanks for mentioning this, Mayor. Through our emergency manager, as most of you perhaps know, Jennifer Franklin has organized, as she does every year, the National Night Out event where people can connect with the police department and each other in their neighborhoods. So last year we just met at the Sculpture Garden area. This year we're going to meet there, but also do as we had done in years past, which is meet at individual neighborhoods. So those people who were interested in having police representatives come visit them at their neighborhood event have contacted Jennifer, and we have a list to do that. So it's a great event and a nice chance to get to know your neighbors and the police officers who serve you in the community here. So thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we move to appearances, which is an opportunity when anyone may address the council on any issue they wish. You will have three minutes to do so. The detailed rules of engagement are on the back wall, but the abbreviated rules just boil down to please be civil. The, I would ask that you introduce yourself, give your address when you begin, and as we get a little bit light, I would ask that people begin to stage themselves back behind the podium such that we're not waiting for people to get up and down. Now, one particular additional note. If you have a copy of our agenda for this evening, you will note that MICA is not on our agenda. And despite that, I know that there's been a great deal of conversation in the community about MICA and its future, and that forces are girding for war on both sides on this, and that there will be conversation about it this evening. So we're happy to take that as input and listen to it, but we won't be reacting to that or making any decisions this evening with regards to MICA. So with that, we are open for public comment. Welcome, Carv.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, Carv Zwingle, 6250 East Mercer Way. I watched with intense interest the presentation to the council meeting, last council meeting by Burke Consulting, which covered how impact fees might be used, among other items, to acquire parklands. An unusual presentation, given this council's propensity for giving away parklands we already have. For example, the attempt to give Kite Hill a portion of Luther Burbank to Sound Transit, or the gift of 2,500 square feet of Clark Beach to an adjacent resident. It's called a sale, but a sale at an 80% discount to 2013, 13 valuations constitutes a gift. Now we have an attempt to give away a portion of Mercerdale Park to a private special interest group. Such an action has been rejected by the citizens of Mercer Island before, in 1988, when there was an attempt to place City Hall in the park as there was no other place to put it. Again, in 97, there was an attempt to place North Fire Station in the park because there was no other place to put it. And now MICA because there was no other place to put it. MICA claims there is no other place to put it because this is free land. It's not free land. It belongs to the Mercer Island taxpayers. There are good people here tonight that will speak in favor of MICA and state that some of us are anti-MICA. Nothing could be further from the truth. I am not anti-MICA. I am for protecting our parklands. What I am against, however, is a process conducted in the shadows. There is citizen input for TCVP, but the southern perimeter of Town Center is shown on page 13 of the city draft your presentation stops at southeast 32nd and does not include Mercerdale, presumably exempting it from discussion. Yet on page 14 of the same presentation, we have a picture showing Mercerdale containing a new city center, actually MICA. How'd that come about? At a public information, MICA stated that, public information meeting, excuse me, that MICA stated the city had agreed to restripe 77th Street to create 60 parking places. Staff says there is no agreement. I don't believe MICA folks are mendacious, so clearly they are being told by someone on the council that this will be taken care of, citizens be damned. MICA states they are only replacing an ugly former recycling building, but it has grown to include bicentennial park and a native plant garden. MICA has also stated that they may need to expand into the grass portion of the park to provide outdoor seating. When asked what the actual footprint of MICA would be if approved, the staff response was there is no formal proposal for MICA. What then are we negotiating? We are dealing with unknowns. I suspect that's deliberate. Other than the mention by MICA that they will operate at a deficit and will therefore need city funding for maintenance, there is no discussion of fiscal impact. If the community center experience is indicative, as well as that of similar-sized community arts buildings in our region, the city is quietly assuming an annual expense of $500,000 to $600,000 per year in $2,014, with no citizen input or approval.
Thank you. You're welcome. Welcome, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary Robinson, 6026 East Mercer Way. I've been an engaged student of the council's behavior for this past year and a half, and would like to share with you some of the insights I've derived from it. I have suggested several times to the mayor that he give a city of, a state-of-the-city address so that citizens know what the council's agenda is. He's told me that isn't his job. That this form of city government doesn't work that way because he is elected as mayor by the council, not the people. Please let me highlight decisions taken by the council that appear to document that there is a council agenda. Moreover, it appears to be a product of group think, and it appears to be at variance with the citizens' agenda. As you all may know, group think is a term coined in 1972. It occurs when a group, in this case, you, the council, makes faulty decisions because group pressure leads to a deterioration of mental efficiency, reality testing, and moral judgment. Groups affected by group think ignore alternatives and tend to take irrational actions and marginal, that marginalize other groups. The consequences of group think are serious and have led to catastrophic results. Because of the time constraint, I will only describe the consequences of group think. They are incomplete survey of alternatives, incomplete survey of objectives, failure to examine risks of preferred choice, failure to reappraise initially rejected alternatives, poor information search, selective bias in processing information at hand, failure to work out contingency plans, low probability of successful outcome. While time does not permit me to fully explore how the council is showing the signs of group think, let me give you examples of the consequences of councils' group think in summary form. These are Mercer, Mercerdale past, not on this council's watch, but the present is on this council's watch, the tree ordinance, no parking in the Mercers, totally 990, Mercer Island Library remodel, Kite Hill, the Heinz property. You know these examples well, and I invite you to examine them in the context of the consequences of group think described earlier. I believe a majority of the citizens would concur that we have a problem, Houston.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Bob Still, 4011 93rd Avenue, Southeast. For the last dozen years or so, Mercer Island's business district building opportunities have been, dare I say, unrestrained, concentrated on apartments and condos with retail shops and offices at the street level, multi-storied, windowed walls, some with balconies. The commonness of these structures is not inappropriate and provide background for more buildings, and that is where Mercer Island is now. More building opportunities. But let's think bigger and change the word opportunities to challenges. Challenges to creating exceptional surroundings for Mercer Island citizens and for others, of course, to match the exceptional area that is Mercer Island and where it is located. That is what we need to ask of our leaders. We've done enough of the common. Let's move ahead and strive for the exceptional, or even the extraordinary. City Council has haphazardly introduced us to two building projects, one of which could be the center of the other. A Mercer Island Arts Center is in the works, and a new and improved Town Center is on the horizon. And egress to and from and through the area is part of the challenge. Is there any reason the structural components, at least, of these projects should not be the responsibility of a single design firm, preferably a local one, who has sensibilities to the beauties and the joys of Mercer Pacific Northwest and Mercer Island? So, come on, City Hall. Think big. Think smart. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Will Canadlik. I appear here tonight on behalf of East Side Rail Now, a rail advocacy and environmental organization. And I come to you tonight because this council has the most short, mid, and long-term interest in the I-90 floating bridge structure. And I've provided for your staff to pass out to you the critical document that I want to make sure you're aware of, because last Thursday, almost exactly seven years after the state's independent review team identified 23 structural matters that need to be resolved before the bridge can safely be used for light rail, Sound Transit passed a $20 million emergency appropriation because Parsons Brinkerhoff has not, as, as I show in the highlighted materials from their motion number 64, has not yet finalized the preliminary hazard analysis for the bridge. Now, this is almost exactly seven years after this report was issued, and it's fully $35 million after payment to Parsons Brinkerhoff. They need another $20 million to do the preliminary analysis. This is a very serious matter, and I've provided for you as well, at the beginning of this document, my testimony to Sound Transit's board last week that would be useful. Because they haven't done the preliminary analysis after almost seven years, there's a lot of things we don't know, but there's a few things we know quite well, as you'll see on pages one, two, and three of the handout. It's been folded back to page four. First of all, we know that some, that at the end of the useful life of the bridge, it will cost somewhere between $18 and $44 billion to replace it. That depends on whether or not it's in 35 years or 100 years. We know as well that the use of the bridge, for reasons that are identified in the public disclosure request to the State Department of Transportation, we know that the life, the useful life of the bridge will be substantially shortened because of the corrosion and because of the flexion damage, and we know that that will cost somewhere between $5 and $15 billion in terms of how much it moves up, the replacement by shortening useful life of the bridge. We know that the Sound Transit East King County subarea's boundary is the west bank of Ural Island, and we know that all of the costs of that replacement should be handled by Seattle North King County Subarea. I urge this city, as having the most interest in this, in the long-term security of this bridge, to take the lead to getting to the bottom of resolution of this before you allow them to shut down the bridge and inconvenience your citizens for years to come and then shorten the life of the bridge. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Welcome, Mindy.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mindy Landsman. My address is 7210 79th Ave, Southeast. I am president of the Board of the Mercer Island Farmers Market, and I've got two brief remarks to make on the market's behalf. First, on behalf of the market, I'd like to thank you for your support over the past eight years. This Sunday, we're celebrating our eighth anniversary between 10 and 3. We hope you, some of you can make it, and we couldn't have, we couldn't have done this without you. Our 13-member volunteer board and our part-time market manager, Patty Spar, worked smoothly with the city of Mercer Island seven months out of the year to provide a unique, community-oriented, well-managed farmers market. Thank you for helping us achieve our mission, which is to provide support to Washington farmers and agriculture, and to sustain the stewards that provide food on our tables. Our market manager, Patty Spar, would have loved to have been here to thank you in person, but on her behalf and ours, the board members, we'd like to specifically thank several members, members of the city staff who have gone above and beyond the call of duty for MIFM. And I won't tell you the jobs that everyone has done, just the names, and I've submitted the, the jobs with the assistant deputy. Okay, so thank you to Bruce Bassett, Dan Grous, Kirsten Taylor, Merrill Thomas Schatt, Anna Lisa Cartwright, Jason Kinter, and Brian Hartvigsen. The second brief remark I'd like to say on behalf of the Mercer Island Farmers Market is in support of MICA. MICA will be an asset to the community by bringing new art events and activities to MIFM and by developing another place for community to gather. MIFM, I'm sorry, that Mercer Island Farmers Market. MIFM has proven to be a place for community to gather and has demonstrated that our community needs and embraces opportunities to interact. Far from obstructing MIFM operations, MICA has included MIFM as a partner in providing not only space, but an enhanced location for operations. MICA has developed a building plan that is sensitive to Mercerdale Park and will enable the park to be used for the benefit of many, during good weather, of course. MICA is demonstrating that it will be a good community partner by providing additional funding for the arts right now. We, from the Farmers Market Board of Directors, hope that MICA will be able to fulfill their vision. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to confess that I, so, I get to say two things. The first is, I have to confess, I never thought that MIFM turned into a word.
It did. It's, it's MIFM.
Yes, thank you for that.
It is MIFM.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And to the rest of the audience, please, we do refrain, we ask that you refrain from shows of either support or derogation, I guess, whether that's a word or not, to those who are speaking, just in the interests of neutrality. So if you would, please, please hold your applause, hold your boos, and we'll go forward. Mindy, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Holly Tabor, and I live at 8851 Southeast 74th Place. And I'm here to express the strongest support of the current plans for the Mercer Island Center for the Arts, or MICA, on behalf of myself and my family, as well as many other YTN families. My son, Colin, is 14 years old and entering eighth grade at IMS. With his permission, I'm also sharing with you that he also has autism. And during the seven years that we have lived on Mercer Island, he has participated in 19 plays, classes, and camps at Youth Theatre Northwest, or YTN, including Fantastic Mr. Fox, Chronicles of Narnia, as well as several Shakespeare plays, including Romeo and Juliet, As You Like It, and this week, 12th Night. YTN has been Colin's major extracurricular activity, his home, and his passion. As an organization, YTN is unique in its welcoming and inclusion of Colin and many other kids with disabilities and learning challenges on the island. There is no other place locally that does this, and it would be very hard for us and families like ours to go off-island for this kind of resource, even if there were such a place elsewhere. Colin's participation in YTN has helped him build confidence, make friends, and believe in himself. YTN promotes the kinds of values of inclusion, creativity, and growth that we stand for on this island. YTN needs a home. Right now, it doesn't have one, and MICA is the best chance for that home. But we are also excited about the other potential community benefits of MICA. We use Mercerdale Park several times a week. Our kids have played in the play structure. My younger son throws a baseball on the grass with his dad. They have ridden around the path on their bikes, until they're told not to ride on the path. We attend summer concerts, and we regularly attend the Farmers Market. We see the current plans for MICA enhancing, rather than detracting, from all of our current uses of Mercerdale Park. We regularly enjoy open space several times a week in many other locations on the island, but Mercerdale is where we go to be with our community, often in combination with shopping or eating out. In this capacity, MICA would be an asset to Mercerdale and an asset to Mercer Island. Please allow the plans to move forward for the future of our children and the values that our community represents. Please don't let YTN and the kids like Colin down. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Daniel Rep, 425 Calmia Place Northwest, Issaquah, Washington. I have been driving to and from Mercer Island regularly for the past eight years. Living in Issaquah, this trip tends to take 20 or 25 minutes. During rush hour, the journey can rush close to 40. On days of bridge closures, the commute becomes long and difficult. After five years of driving duty, my parents were more excited when I got my driver's license than I was. The reason I spend so many hours each year traveling on I-90 and eat so many meals at local businesses here is a wonderful organization called Youth Theatre Northwest. In the Seattle area, even in my hometown of Issaquah, young drama enthusiasts like me are blessed with a wide variety of programs to learn and perform theater, but still, YTN's allure draws me across Lake Washington, as it has since elementary school. If one were to ask me the reason why I love YTN so dearly, that person would be missing the point. There is no one reason. There are countless reasons. However, I checked the itinerary, and apparently speakers aren't given an endless amount of time here, so allow me to focus in on the core of what makes YTN so precious: the community. YTN's faculty consists of accomplished artists giving their all to nurture the next generation's creative and personal development. One show provides a kid with excellent friends, new challenges, and boosted confidence. After a couple years, YTN students become Renaissance youth, able to sing, dance, work puppets, handle set pieces, operate technical lighting and sound equipment, and, I hope, effectively speak in public. YTN's faculty members teach all these skills. They also take the time to get to know the kids they work with. We tell bad jokes together. Students and educators at YTN play, work, learn, and grow together. Since year one, I have sincerely felt that YTN is a second home to me. When our executive director, Manny, announced that YTN found a new space in the future MICA facilities, I was so grateful to the extended Mercer Island community for supporting the YTN family. Some citizens are concerned that MICA's new location poses a threat to Mercerdale Park. In a world where parks are commonly threatened by development, such concerns are often valid. However, in this particular instance, I believe such fears spring from a lack of understanding about not only the non-invasive plan, but also about how public parks and the arts can both flourish in a symbiotic relationship. If you don't believe me, clearly you've never seen one of Yeti's summer readings in the park. Yeti, or Youth Experimental Theater Institute, is an organization run entirely by people ages 13 to 23, and it is founded by a group of YTN alumni so inspired by YTN's community that they started their own theater troupe. Yeti does readings of youth-written plays in parks on Mercer Island every summer, and it's a magical experience. People come together to enjoy the summer air and the grass and the shade and original live theater. What a testament to the effectiveness of drama and parks bringing a community together. Mercer Island is your city. What do you want its future to be? Do you want it to be known for fostering the development of creative, confident minds? Do you want Mercer Island to celebrate both the artistic culture and natural beauty of the Pacific Northwest? The current plan to convert the Closer Cycling Center into an arts facility and renovate the trails of park surrounding is a beautiful marriage between a lovely park and a vibrant artistic community. YTN gave me a voice, and I hope today to return the favor. As a nonprofit organization, YTN simply doesn't have the funds to purchase private land. Please allow YTN to live on it more than just a depressive legacy.
Have to.
Let Mercer Island continue to draw people across the lake.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Lauren Bujidavie, 8405 Southeast 33rd Place. I've been participating at YTN since I was eight years old. Now I'm 16 and a junior at Mercer Island High School. I've been participating there for over half my life, and it's been one of the most amazing places ever for me. You learn a lot of life skills at YTN, like how to curl your hair and make it stay for the run of a production. But more importantly, you learn things like how to be able to talk in front of people, like I'm doing now. You also learn the joy of working on something for a really, really long time, and then finally seeing the outcome of it on opening night. You also learn professionalism. If you don't show up for rehearsals, you're not going to be prepared on opening night. Even though I don't intend to be an actress, I actually want to be a forensic scientist, I know that these skills will serve me well in life. You have to be professional in order to get a career, and you have to be able to talk in front of people in order to get your point across. I, YTN is also where I found my people. I, you go through the ups and downs of production and life in general with all the people that you find in your plays, and you remain friends for years, even when you're not in shows together, or if you go to different schools. You also make friends across age groups and just all over the Seattle and Bellevue area. If MICA doesn't get built, many children after me will never find that home away from home and that wonderful place where they can be themselves and sing songs together and just be nerdy and have fun. I really strongly support building MICA at Mercerdale Park because I think it will add to Mercerdale Park. It might take up a It might take up a little bit of green space, but the fact that children will be going there and teenagers who, we don't really go to parks that much, but having MICA there will give us a real reason to go there, and we'll be able to share our music with people and sing outside in the sun when it's not raining sunny. And that is why building MICA at Mercerdale Park is a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Annie Skralpwa, 8363 Woodbrook Lane. So I've been participating at Youth Theatre since I was three years old, or kindergarten, but they allow you to go when you're three years old. And I just graduated recently, and so technically, I'm an alumni now. And I grew a lot at Youth Theatre Northwest as a person. I used to be very shy. I would never order food with my mom when I was seven. I was very scared of talking to strangers or talking to anyone in general or making friends. And I decided to do theater at Youth Theatre Northwest, and I really discovered my voice. And I actually learned that I wanted to be an actress there. And last year, I found out, before I graduated, that they were tearing down the building. And it really broke my heart because it was like a place where I felt safe, and it was like my home away from home. And so, it was very hard for me. But when I found out that they had found a new space, it made me very happy because I knew there was a new place where people, young children like me, were able to go and find their voice, like I did, and stay on Mercer Island with this really great community because we're able to get people like Daniel from Issaquah, who's been a really good friend of mine, people from Seattle. And we bring people to Mercer Island so that they can learn about our community and even at Mercerdale Park especially, they will be able to see, you know, like the beauty we have at a park. And I just think that it's a really important decision to make, and I know it's hard on both sides because there are very strong points on both sides of this argument, but I do think that having it at Mercerdale Park will really be a big decision, and I think it's a great decision to have MICA there because it's in downtown area, and so a lot of people can get food more easily when you're at rehearsal and you forgot your sandwich because you live in Issaquah, and you forgot to bring it because you had a lot of homework to do. And so there's, you can support the local businesses, and, I mean, who knows? You could have picnics outside, and it just, I feel like it'll bring more people to the park. And I think that's really what we all want, is to make the park a better place, and hopefully the arts and the park can work together, as obviously a lot of people have been saying, so that it can make it even a stronger community and to make the arts, the park, the people, everyone come together at the same location. So I hope you consider keeping MICA as the plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Yasmeen Gaber, 4640 91st Avenue Southeast.
My name is Madeline Dalton, 12131 Southeast 91st Street, Newcastle, Washington.
I will be 15 years old a week from Wednesday, and I've been at YTN for four seasons now.
I'm 16, gonna be a senior, and I have been at YTN for 10 seasons, ever since I was eight years old. And today, we're gonna keep it short with the talking. We're mostly gonna be singing. We're gonna be singing "For Good" from Wicked because YTN has been like our second home, and it has really changed us for good as people and as performers. And now I've gotta get my pitch pipe out. (singing) I've heard it said that people come into our lives for a reason, bringing something we must learn. And we are led to those who help us most to grow if we let them and we help them in return. Well, I don't know if I believe that's true, but I know I'm who I am today because I knew you. Like a comet pulled from orbit as it passes the sun, like a stream that meets a boulder halfway through the wood. Who can say if I've been changed for the better? But because I knew you, I have been changed for good. It well may be that we will never meet again in this lifetime, so let me say before we part, so much of me is made of what I learned from you. You'll be with me like a handprint on my heart. And now whatever way our stories end, I know you have rewritten mine by being my friend. Like a comet pulled from orbit as it passes the sun, like a wind off the sea, like a stream that meets a boulder halfway through the wood. Who can say if I've been changed for the better? I do believe I have been changed for the better. Because I knew you. Because I knew you. Because I knew you. I have been changed for good.
All right. Cool. We'll break this sort of call.
So I think the last song to sing to us was Phil Flash.
I think I might have missed that one because I don't recall. I was gonna say, I didn't recall that ever happening, and I feel a bit like we are the hosts...
He did an Irish tune.
We're the hosts on one of these talent seat-searching shows. We'll see you in Radio City Music Hall, or whatever. Thank you for that. All right. Unloved. Welcome, Jenny.
Wow, you guys are a tough act to follow. And believe me, you don't want me to sing. My name is Jenny Meacham, and I live at 8451 Southeast 36th Street. And I would like to start off by thanking the city council for the first reading of the school impact fees and the ordinance for school impact fees, and to thank you guys for all the work and lobbying you've done to get sound transit, to make sure that Mercer Island residents' voice is heard in the upcoming negotiations. So, people on Mercer Island like to have our voices heard. So I think part of the, one of those voices that is coming through loud and clear is the support of putting the art center in Mercerdale Park. I believe some of the opposition is against it because it's giving away land or giving away public goods to a nonprofit. But this is a nonprofit, an organization that is of the people, by the people, and for the people. It is truly a community effort. It is not the Kite Hill parking lot. It is not tall buildings downtown. It is not a bus intercept. It is not the Heinz Project. This is something that many, many, many people in the community support. And I think this is a perfect example of a public-private partnership and of the government and a nonprofit and several entities, both the city council, the city government, and the school board, getting together to creatively problem-solve. I also think it is perfectly legitimate to revisit a 40-year-old agreement when the circumstances have changed and when there's a clear opportunity to do something really wonderful. The time to enforce that would have been when the recycling center first came vacant, which was, what, seven, eight years ago? Now, another opposition or idea is, why not put this on the hindsight? Well, I think it's a fabulous idea to, for people to raise private money to do something great on the hindsight. I think that's a wonderful idea. But there's already a tremendous amount of money, effort, love, and design work already put into putting the art center in Mercerdale. And frankly, the hindsight could be much better used for something like a community, you know, one of those community sort of malls where you have artisanal shops and you've got small businesses and two or three levels of housing on top. And that is a very different set of economics. Lastly, a lot of people say, "Not in my backyard." Well, I look at this as putting a gazebo and a deck and a fire pit in a corner of my backyard where my neighbors and friends and family can hang out and create wonderful memories. So, I'm a yimby, just in my backyard. And last, I've not really spoken about youth theater because plenty of people have, but youth theater rocks. Ribbit, ribbit, ribbit.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Judy Kimmelman. I live at 9242 Southeast 46th Street, and I'm here on behalf of my two kids, Kaia and Jason McCrur, who would have been here, but they're out of the country and have sent me many emails and texts asking me to come tonight. And we're part of the YTN family, and I'm here to speak in favor of MICA as it is proposed. Our kids' lives were incredibly enriched by being involved in YTN. It's an incredible community. It's so important to have arts education in their, in their education. I think whether you're involved in the arts as a participant or part of the audience, it can only enhance our community and our kids' education. Our kids are gonna go on to continue doing arts. My daughter is going into her third year at Stanford and is part of the Shakespeare Company. Our son will be part of the, involved in musical theater also at Stanford. Their exposure to theater has had a huge influence on their lives and can only benefit our whole community. Secondly, I was at the public meeting about MICA, and I was really impressed by how well-fought-out the Performing Arts Center is. It's environmentally friendly, it's low impact on the park, it's an incredibly beautiful structure, and it will really help bring the whole community together. I think anyone that was at that meeting left feeling really inspired and excited about what we can do here on Mercer Island.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Paul Yano. I'm a youth theater alum, and I grew up on Mercer Island. I'm now in my third year of college. The point I want to make is that these are all great points that have been made, but as a kid growing up on Mercer Island, it's not always easy. There aren't places to go. There aren't places to go where you can do things that you want to do. I mean, I was, I was stopped almost monthly by the police for years on Mercer Island for walking around at night. You can't go anywhere downtown without a car or without any money, which is something that kids, when they're in high school, often don't have, or both of the above. And youth theater was the one place, when I was a young kid, where you were given a stake in the things that you were creating, where you were listened to, where you were a part of what was happening. You know, it was the only place where you weren't told what to do, how to do it, and when to do it. And that is the reason why there's so much outpouring of love from these people here and from me myself. And so for me, when I drive by the hole in the ground where youth theater used to be, it's another reminder of the way that I feel that kids are treated on this island and the way that their needs are taken into account. And there's a reason why there's no one here between the ages of 18 and 35, except me. And so this needs to happen because kids need a place where they can be themselves and where they can be a part of what they're building. And right now, they don't have any. And it was an amazing thing that you guys have. I think it is really a pity that the way it was destroyed happened that way. There are a lot of other ways that could have happened, but especially considering, I just looked up the peak, the community center, and the new school bill totaled more than $130 million, which I think have an educational value far lower than youth theater had for the kids that are involved there. So I, I think it's kind of an insult that we even have to be here talking about this stuff. This, I mean, Bellevue paid for their entire youth theater because they understand the value it has for kids, and so I think it should just be done now. And as to the parks, I understand it's a big criticism of the parks. I find it upsetting that there is invasive species all over our parks. So I think that taking a small part of our park and making it a better waterland is actually a good thing, and especially being a place that kids can come and hang out because we need a space like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Basset, and thank you, city council members. My name's Steve Hamilton. I live at 7161 86th Avenue Southeast. You're gonna learn pretty quickly here that I didn't have the benefit of Youth Theatre Northwest as a kid. But my wife and I did grow up in towns very, very similar to Mercer Island. We had fantastic schools and a great community. And we moved here in 2007, looking for the same for our two kids, and, and we found it in every way. One of the things we found was this Cold War-era concrete thing that had inside of it this, this gem called Youth Theatre Northwest. And one of the most unexpected things we found was that our son really fell in love with it and found a, found a home there. And over the last eight years, we've watched him perform dozens and dozens of times in these plays. We've watched him grow from a scrawny little kindergartner to, you know, a high school kid, you know, starting in the fall. So, the Mercer Island Council has really been a big supporter of MICA since the beginning, and I want to thank you for that, and I want to continue, I want to encourage you to stay the course and keep MICA on track for Youth Theatre Northwest. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Kate Lamperty. I live at 8320 Southeast 30th Place. And again, I want to thank the council, and I've come up and spoken to you a couple times before as an advocate for parks, and I believe that I'm doing the same today. I'm a very strong supporter of MICA, and I think that its location in Mercerdale Park really only enhances the park. In the past, I've come to talk against building the parking lot in Kite Hill, and I'm also very involved in preserving Luther Burbank Park. And I believe that the parks we have on Mercer Island are treasures. And there are some parks that are beloved because of their natural surroundings, and there are some parks like Mercerdale Park which are really special because it's really a recreation park and a gathering place. And I believe that MICA's been thought out so carefully and will really enhance the community use and enjoyment of that park. Just the other night, I was at the Music in the Park in Summers, and I was thinking about how wonderful that would be to have that kind of a community gathering throughout the other seasons when it's less attractive to get together. So often in, in the Pacific Northwest, we tend to kind of huddle together in our houses in the poor weather and come out and meet our neighbors and be part of the community in the summertime. And I think it would be wonderful to have MICA as a center downtown, both to draw people to Mercer Island, for our local businesses. I think it would really be a boon for our restaurants and stores, and also to help continue to bring the community together. The other thing that I think YTN has been well, well-supported, and there's nothing else I can say, it's obviously, I think, sold itself, but MICA will also be a center, I think, for all ages in the community. For our seniors, it'd be wonderful to have different types of music, dance. Mercer Island is a place that really supports the community, and we have lots of places for recreation, for sports, and we really need a center for the arts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Suzanne Zahnizer. My address is 7433 West Mercer Way, and I want to talk about MICA, the location of MICA, and I am in favor of locating it at the park. And I just want to say, I love youth theater, I love the arts, I love parks and open spaces. That's all been covered. I just want to talk about two things. One is, there, there seems to be a concern that MICA is somehow taking something away from Mercerdale Park, and I just want to say that the activities that people enjoy at that park now, and I enjoy these activities, some of them, those things will still be at Mercerdale Park. If people like to walk on those little trails on the slope, those will be there. I was just walking there the other day. We were picking nettles. If you like to walk down the stairs into the park, the stairs will be there. If the skateboarders enjoy skateboarding, they'll still be able to do that. If, if you enjoy the big lawn, the big lawn will be there. We've been really careful, oh, and I should say, I am on the board of MICA, and I'm on the Mercer Island Arts Council. We've tried to think of all the uses and make sure that they will still be there. So that's one part of it. The other part is, there seems to be a concept that somehow MICA is taking free land. And I just want to say, I know the city council knows that this cannot happen. I want, I want to say it so that everyone hears it. MICA is not asking for free land. MICA is asking for a lease of land in exchange for providing to the city at no additional charge services and facilities. And we have been working with the city and will continue to work with the city to make sure that MICA provides what the city needs to fulfill its obligations. sure that MICA provides what the city needs to fulfill its obligations to the community. So, we are not asking for anything free. We are not trying to take something that the city can never give back, and we are not trying to interfere with the use of the park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joan, welcome.
Hello. My name is John Gordon Hill, 8914 Southeast 56th Street. Off the northwest corner of the great lawn of Mercordale Park sits an abandoned recycling center surrounded by a large patch of asphalt. This recycling center closed five years ago because curbside recycling made it redundant. It is now home to a truck trailer, two dark and uninviting public restrooms, storage, and occasional vermin. Immediately south of the recycling center is an overgrown thicket that is apparently a good place to do things one would rather not be seen doing. The evidence is everywhere. This is a site that was chosen for the Mercer Island Center for the Arts. A large group of civic-minded citizens put together a nonprofit to build a badly needed art center for our community, and the city has wisely agreed that replacing an eyesore and a public nuisance with MICA would be a good idea. This is a gift to the community, and will provide a home for Youth Theater Northwest, for music, for dance classes, art classes, plays, dances, recitals, lectures, exhibitions, galas, receptions, and all manner of entertainment and culture. This is a good thing. Mercordale is a park for people. It has a lawn. It has a pergola. It has a children's playground. It has a skate park. It has exercise stations. It is at its best when it is filled with people, like mostly Music in the Park, summer celebration, and of course, the farmer's market. MICA would bring that life and vitality to the park year-round and provide a beautiful new public restroom and sinks and storage for the farmer's market. There is no better site for MICA on the island. People who oppose MICA on this site are not saving Mercordale Park. They are saving an abandoned recycling center. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Anna Gordon. I live at 3856 81st Avenue Southeast. I am -- my role in this community as a -- for the last 15 years has been as a volunteer, and I have seen what volunteers can do. And one of the most significant things has been the farmer's market, where about nine years ago, a group of concerned citizens said, "This is an opportunity for Mercer Island", and did it. They didn't ask for a lot. They did ask the city to close streets. There was a lot of opportunity there for partnership. There was also a lot of opportunity for opposition, but they thought through it. They saw this as an opportunity for the community, and three years ago, I joined them because it's volunteer-run and it needs the support of volunteers. We don't always get an opportunity to support something like that and see it come to fruition. And I love hearing about the community's support of the farmer's market. And I'm not sure that everyone recognizes that it comes about because a dedicated group of citizens said, "We want to do this." Part of the reason I'm for MICA is exactly the same reason. It's volunteers who say, "We want to have an opportunity in our community to make a difference." And where the farmer's market makes a difference 18 Sundays of the year, and I think you see that difference, you feel that community and that vibrancy, why not let that happen 365 days of the year? Mercordale comes alive when the farmer's market is there. Mercordale will come alive when MICA is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Leslie.
Leslie Bain, 4180 West Mercer Way. I'm here tonight as the architect of MICA, and I am the architect of MICA because I believe in it passionately. What a gift we have in this community with YTN. One of my children was there for about 10 years, and it's an amazing thing we have in this community. We also have a hyper-local team. It's an amazing group of people to design this park and this building in the park. And I have, for years, been studying the relationship of public space, community space, built space, indoor space, and its relationship to outdoor space. And I really believe that this is going to be an amazing asset to the city and to the park and to our community. It's going to build community. It's going to bring us together. So I want to say that I've also been involved in the town center planning. We are in the middle of a growing region, and we're not immune from that. We are at a time right now that's a very interesting time. We're thinking about who we want to be as a community, what our future is, what our shared future is. And people with all kinds of opinions about this are people of goodwill, and it's time to really thoughtfully think about what the soul of this city is. And there's no question in my mind that we have heard from that soul earlier tonight. So, parks are not just one thing. In the Northwest, we're really good at the kind of parks where we bring the woods into our lives, and that's really important, the beautiful ravines and lake fronts, it's wonderful. What we're less good at in this region is the kinds of parks that bring people together, that are gathering places, that are plazas. We've known for years that we need this on the island. I just read the 1994 report, and for over 20 years, we've been looking for that plaza for that gathering space. Well, this is our big backyard, and the successful spaces like that, it's all about what happens at the edges. It's not just that we have a lawn there, but we have a place for the toddlers, we have a place for the teenagers. We have a place where we bring the culture, the community life that we share, to a place that's beautiful. If you were going to build a house next to your backyard, you wouldn't put a street in the middle. You would put your house on that space so that the living space, indoors and outdoors, works together all year-round. That's what we want to enjoy. And I thank you for all the work. We've been talking about this for years, and these things are hard, and we persevere, but it is such a worthy cause, and I thank you for all your efforts. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Jessie Wasson. I live on the island at 4180 West Mercer Way. I am 31 years old and an alumni of Youth Theater Northwest. And just like Daniel, I went to Issaquah High School, but I traveled across the lake for years and years to attend Youth Theater Northwest. And to this day, I don't keep in touch with any of my friends from high school, but just this weekend, I was paddleboarding with a fellow YTN alumni, and we talked about our regular alumni dinner that we would have together with people that I've known for 16 years. In the summer of 2012, I was hired at YTN as a registrar, and I am now the development director. And I have been part of the process of finding interim and permanent location for YTN for over two and a half years. And oh my gosh, we've looked at probably 10 sites, and none even compare to the recycling center location. Village Theater created downtown Issaquah, and MICA will do the same thing for Mercer Island. Restaurants and shops will see a huge boom, and customers and children from all over the Puget Sound will come to MICA to perform on our stage. Art and nature go hand in hand. Aristotle once said, "Art takes nature as its model." MICA and the park were meant to be together. There's been a lot of talk of MICA destroying the park, but really, the only part we are losing is a little section of overgrown trees where kids do things that they're not supposed to do. And I can attest to this, although I wasn't one that did the bad things. I know it happened. Youth Theater has shaped my life, and I am forever grateful. I have a career and a family because of it. This is an invaluable organization that changes lives, and without a future home, it will cease to exist. I urge you to maintain the recycling center property for MICA. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Anne Jess, and I just live down the road at 4336 East Mercer Way, in a little neighborhood called Cedar Cove. And I've been listening to a lot of the talk against putting MICA at Mercordale Park, and it's very interesting because some of the comments were about, you know, "We're giving away public land." Like, "We own this." Well, this is -- I'm a citizen of Mercer Island. I've been a citizen of Mercer Island since 1987, so however many years that is. All three of my kids grew up here and went to school here, and now they're out of the house, so I don't have any of my own children at youth theater. But I did have one that went for many years, and I do think it saved his life, and it made him a better person. Some of the arguments about thinking about what we want to do, what do the citizens of Mercer Island want? We want to do something exceptional. We want to do something extraordinary. We want to have a good place for our kids to live and grow up. We want to have a place where we can go out to dinner and not have to fight the traffic going off-island. And we try to support the stores here. We shop, buy books at the bookstore, eat in the restaurants, buy our groceries here. If there was a clothing store, I've shopped at every single clothing store that's ever opened, including the thrift shop. So, you know, I'm a citizen. I live here, and I go to Mercordale Park. Now I have another child in my life. This is my grandchild. I never imagined that that would happen so soon in my life, but she's wonderful, and we've gone to Mercordale when she was just a baby to take her on the swings. And we've taken her there with her little bicycle so she can ride around. And guess what? She went to youth theater like her dad. It's another generation that's going to grow up. If it wasn't here, would I fight the traffic to go to Issaquah? Would I fight the traffic to go to Seattle? Probably not. So let's do something exceptional and extraordinary for Mercer Island and go forward with this creative arts center, because I am all about the arts, and I love the idea that we're going to have a place to go to see more art and more performances besides youth theater. And I think it will be the best for everyone. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Manny, welcome.
Gosh, how do you follow all of that? Hello, city council. So good to see all of you. I'm here today to, again, thank you for inspiring -- my name is Manny Kawine. I'm the executive director for this lovely family here of Youth Theater Northwest. We work at the Emmanuel Episcopal Church now in our interim period at 4486th Avenue Southeast. I'm here today, again, to thank you for inspiring a movement that will lead to more creativity and dynamic play for children and families on Mercer Island. Much has happened since August 2013. We have talked to many people. This is not a project that we've been working in the shadows. This is a project that actually has become what it is because we have surveyed the community. We've talked to artists, we've talked to arts groups and audiences. What we are envisioning building near Mercordale Park is the result of what people want. We really feel that we are not here just to speak about YTN, but the needs of the entire community. I understand there are some concerns for MICA. As a former arts program director for the CL Park System, I feel this is an issue I'm very well informed on. Parks and recreation. Parks give communities natural breathing spaces, and recreation programs make the grounds come alive. They make opportunities for you to express your human spirit. Within civic designs, urban parks, unlike preserves like Luther Burbank or Pioneer, urban parks have great potential to build stronger communities, and there are many examples of this. Pratt Fine Arts Center at Pratt Park, Seward Park Play Studio at Seward Park, Daybreak Star at Discovery Park, the Madrona Dance Studio at Madrona Beach, the Bath House Theater at Green Lake. None of these destroy their parks. In fact, they made them better. They brought more people to enjoy what we all have a right to enjoy, what we all own. Beautiful grounds, valuable facilities, great programs make active and dynamic parks with tremendous community investment and use. What we envision does not at all threaten the existing enjoyment and use of Mercordale. We are not building on the lawn. Children will still play on the train. Urban hikers will still escape under a forest canopy. Picnics will happen, hopefully more so. You will still walk your dog, and it will never be too late for any of you to find your inner skateboarder. But wouldn't you love to experience more there? Wouldn't you love to see children play at the same time that seniors are coming out of a play? Wouldn't you love to have a picnic after the show? Wouldn't you love to find opportunities that, once you create a facility, there are more ideas of how we can gather as a community? One thing that I did when I was at Langston Hughes Performing Arts Center, which is a community center of CL Parks and Recreation that was in a park, is we invested in putting cable into the building, and we were inspired to do that after September 11th, because we really felt that every time something happened, people wanted to gather from their neighborhood in a park, and we really wanted to create more opportunities to do this. That is some of the things that MICA could do. There's been a lot of talk on this issue. We are good people, trying to make Mercer Island a better place. That's all that we're doing. Thank you. And see our show.
Welcome, Tracy.
Hi. I'm Tracy Drinkwater. I'm at 5912 83rd Place Southeast. In 2001, I was an active volunteer in MIPA and supported the new playground now affectionately known as the Train Park, a place for children to nurture their bodies and spirit and for adults to watch their children at play. I can't think of a better use of a neglected portion of a park than a playground. YTN is a wonderful community asset. My family has benefited from countless ways -- in countless ways over the last 15 years. In addition to seeing numerous outstanding shows, my children have taken classes, camps, performed in performance series, studio, stage, and mainstage productions. My college-age daughter is even working at YTN this summer, assisting at summer camps. MICA, the new home for YTN, is another kind of playground, a place for children, youth, teenagers, and adults to nurture their bodies and spirit and see each other at play. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Connie Wyble, and I live at 3621 81st Avenue Southeast. I've been a citizen here since 1988 and was a single parent, raised my four kids here. I had the alternative kids. I had the kids that found -- actually, my son helped design the skate park. And I had the kids who were extremely creative. One of them is a professional musician. She's performed here many times. And one of them used that skate park and the woods for alternative purposes. So, and we lived just up the hill. My kids weren't into Youth Theater Northwest. They were into entrepreneurship, they were into creating jewelry, they were into designing things, like the skate park. I believe my son Jacob went to that skate park brainstorming mission where they asked these little skaters to come, and he had a skate park model that he brought with him. He'd been working on that for a long time, even before there was even an opportunity. So that's the kind of kids I had. What I do is, I'm a musician. I'm a piano teacher. I teach here, my studio Musical Mind. What I have developed, because my heart is with this community, is a program for autistic children that works really well. What I want to develop, and what's always been my mind, is a space, not in my home only, which is a warm, welcoming place for people to come, but a space people could come, hear music, they could come upstairs to the technology classroom that will be built in MICA, they could put on headphones, they could play out their troubles, they could come for classes on music wellness. Autistic children and parents of newly diagnosed children could come and talk and just meet and play and learn, have some guided emphasis on how to help their children at those beginning stages where their hearts are just breaking. Seniors, I have a program I've been trained in for over 10 years with Yamaha Piano Company on Yamaha Clavino connection for senior citizens. And I have tried to figure out how I could get eight digital pianos in a space that seniors could be bussed to, and I could help them improve their lifestyle, help them prevent Alzheimer's and dementia with music. MICA prevents, provides that space for me. I'll bring those pianos. I'll get them. But this is another part of it you don't see. In addition, a place for music. I belong to an eight-hand piano group, and we have been concertizing for the last five years. It's very hard to find a space that we can have good decent pianos or bring at least one more in that isn't so cost prohibitive. There's one space, and that's all I can find in Seattle right now. So this is going to be an excellent place for this in addition to Youth Theater Northwest. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Martina Dalton. My address is 12131 Southeast 91st Street, Newcastle. I'm here, actually, to read a letter on behalf of Mercer Island residents who couldn't be here today. But first, I wanted to say that Mercer Islanders are extremely lucky. I don't think you know how lucky you are. I live in Newcastle. There are banks on one side of the street, this is downtown, banks on the other side of the street, a QFC and a Safeway, and that is it. So thank you for working so hard to make this a great community for the region, too. So now I'd like to read this letter from Lou Molikoff and Michelle Fetter. Dear City Council, we want to express our strong support for the current plan to locate MICA at the Mercordale location. A multipurpose art center with Youth Theater Northwest as the anchor tenant offers Mercer Island and Dear City Council, we want to express our strong support for the current plan to locate MICA at the Mercerdale location. A multipurpose arts center with Youth Theater Northwest as the anchor tenant offers Mercer Island an opportunity to be a different and better community. MICA, as proposed in the park, would be a wonderful addition to Mercer Island and a wonderful addition to the park environment, enhancing its use for even more members of our community. Specifically, YTN has a valued and important member of our community for more than 30 years. Our 13-year-old son got his start in theater at age three and continues to participate in YTN in addition to other theaters off-island. To lose this cultural resource on Mercer Island would be a great tragedy for our community and for our kids. In addition, we have a unique perspective as residents of the Mercerdale neighborhood. Invariably, MICA would create an impact in our neighborhood, as would any development in the town center. In this case, however, we believe the impact would be positive. MICA would enhance the park, would improve the existing area around the recycling center, and although a portion of wooded area would be sacrificed as residents of the neighborhood, we are well aware that section of the park is far from the sanctuary the opponents of MICA would like to suggest. We love Mercerdale Park and the idea of a performing arts center existing in symbiotic relationship with the park is a long-term win for Mercer Island, not only for the theater kids, but for all people of all ages in our community. And finally, we don't get the opportunity to make this kind of positive investment in our community often. Although everyone has different visions of what constitutes progress and different visions of where we ought to invest, we are among the many who would welcome our city's investment in the arts, in our youth, and in our cultural development. Sincerely, Lou Molikoff and Michelle Fetter. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Grady Short. My address is 8428 Southeast 34th Place. And I'd like to speak here tonight in favor of the proposed MICA, the Center for the Arts. And I think we've heard a lot in favor of it. And first of all, I'd like to start off by saying that as a Boy Scout, actually, which I'm here for a merit badge as part of, to witness a City Council meeting. Now, my troop meets in Emmanuel Episcopal Church, the same place that Youth Theater Northwest has been relocated to since their main building that they've had for a while was torn down. They kind of have a makeshift setup, you know? And I'll pass by. I'll say that they've made a sort of stage and they've blacked out the windows, done the best they could to make it like a theater. But I think we can all agree in this room that such a great organization deserves a better place than the annex of a church that's not fit for performing arts. And I'd like to say that I'm not affiliated with the youth theater. I'm a musician, not an actor. And so on any given day, I'll spend maybe one to three hours practicing one of the few instruments that I play. And I do it alone in a room in my house, not because it's my choice to necessarily play and make music by myself, but because there's nowhere, at least currently, to really go to find other people who also enjoy making music and want to do that with other people. Now, I know the high school has a jazz band and a band, but for example, let's take the example of youth theater. The high school also has a drama program. And the thing that I think people have said makes youth theater special is that it's separate from school. It's a safe place, one where you can be yourself and participate in creating something that's greater than yourself. And I feel the same way about music. And I'd like to stress the importance of a center for the arts, not just for youth theater, but for dance, music, and whatever other arts that the city and the organization may choose to promote. Now, on a last note, I've played in Mercerdale since I was, I remember going there when I was two. It's been an integral part of my life, the parks in Mercer Island, that is. And it's a great park. And to those who say that such a center might ruin the park, let's take the example of the skate park. People at some point must have decided to put that skate park in because they thought it would make the park a better park so people could recreate in their own way. Well, the performing arts center is just like that. Parks are for recreation of all kinds. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ira.
Hey, Bruce. Ira Appleman, 4436 Ferencref Row. I object to this City Council giving an expanding portion of Mercerdale Park to a special interest group called MICA that can raise $25 million for a facility but can't raise a dime to cite the facility because it considers our parks free land. This City Council is setting a record as the council most hostile to parks in Mercer Island history. First, you agreed to sell off a portion of Clark Beach to an encroaching property for a bargain price of $11 per square foot, a rate of about $100,000 for a standard lot, which no others can find on Mercer Island. Based on the public records requests I've done, this is the first time in Mercer Island history that a City Council has agreed to sell off part of a park to an encroaching property. Second, you tried to cite a parking garage on Kite Hill, which the City Council had previously designated as open space. Again, another first. Third, you've agreed to a giveaway of part of Mercerdale Park without a public vote. In the nearly 40 years Islanders have battled to protect Mercerdale Park from overdevelopment, no City Council has ever agreed to give away part of the park without a public vote. As this council continues to amend city code to jam more and more people into the town center and into the neighborhoods, parks and open space become more critically important. Particularly frightening is the doctrine you've enunciated that the reason it's okay to cement over the natural garden and hillside of the park is that it's little-used. That doctrine threatens the rest of our parks that are used less than Mercerdale Park, including Mercerdale Hillside, Pioneer Park, Luther Burbank Park, Upper Luther Burbank Park, the western half of Island Crest Park, and a number of smaller open spaces around the island. Especially in the western United States, the initiative, referendum, and recall were seen as a check on local governments that had come under the control of special interests like MICA. Since this City Council cannot be trusted to protect our parks, it may be time for a citizen-passed initiative to protect Mercerdale and all the other parks for current and future generations to enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you. Why don't you move on over so you're one back?
Good evening. Eric Swenson, 8541 East Mercer Way. We've heard some very passionate descriptions and devotion to all those things the Community Center for the Arts might bring, and I'm not against them. However, I think that as in politics, often you hear simply the voices of those that are most invested. It clearly is, we're seeing this in the run-up to the national election. As someone who spoke very, very strongly for the Mercer Island Library against the depredations of KCLS, it was clear that many, many people didn't know about the situation. And decisions were being made on the basis of input from a small number of people. And when a greater fraction of the citizenry was heard, clearly something changed and the Mercer Island Library will survive and be a better place for that. I'd like to reiterate what Ira said. I think this issue is a big enough one that it really should go before the people in some way. City Council should devise some initiative balloting or some polling of the citizenry to ask whether we're ready to do this. It may well be that you'll hear yes, but land is going to be given away and citizens need to know that. And citizens, many say, yes, I'm willing to give it away. Others may not, but we need to hear from everyone. And the issue that seems to be rather put under the rug here, of course, is that there's a potential cost to the city over the many years that this exists. We haven't heard that discussed. There haven't been any real financial impacts of what a half-million dollars a year would mean. And I think all of these issues together, the fact that this is a very, very beloved spot on Mercer Island, Community Center for the Arts would be a valuable addition. But I think we need to hear the people speak more than what you're hearing here. And I would urge you strongly to, in some way, put this forward to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Lloyd.
I'm Lloyd Gelman. Forgot my address. 7217 80th Avenue Southeast, Mercer Island. Like the piano, if I get started, I can finish, but if I don't, I've started. Ira, there is no constitutional right to a park the City Council can give and can take away like that. I want to say I applaud the benefits of the Youth Theater Northwest and the marriage of them with MICA that helps both causes. I got in this concern, citizens, for the saving of Mercerdale because of my experience in upstate New York with an Aaron Copeland home that city wanted to buy and actually gave to some elite people in upstate New York, Cotonan Hudson, so performers, instructors could have their elite, crummy kind of operation. Three promising composers were to live there and I suppose like kids in the aisle of the school get together and say, what's good music? Don't know how that works. But I'm opposed to the elitism. If the city were to run it, MICA, and that spot, it'd be dynamite. But that's not the plan. I want to talk about the marriage. At my daughter's wedding reception or whatever, there was a talk, you know, dinner, you talk. I finally asked someone up the courage and said I wanted to tell them marriages have trials and tribulations. One of you will want to roll the toothpaste, the other will want to squeeze it. Instantly, a relative came up and says, I don't care what they do, I'm their dentist. Yeah, why lease it? Why not give it away? Get the process going, then give it away. Say, we decided, the citizens decided, they want it. Give the darn thing away. Why charge anything for it? Well, the only other thing I would say is, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I will close public comments. Thank you all. And as is often the case, a particular note of thanks for articulateness, amazing articulateness that we hear here, thoughtfulness that we hear here, and the passionate sense of wanting to do good things for this community. And that's true regardless of where you were on the issue. You were speaking of passion for this community and I think we should all be, as council members, appreciative of that. And I hope you are, too, and of your neighbors for being so involved in our community. So thank you. Okay, with that, council members, we're keeping going here, right? Okay? Jane says we're going to stop. Let's take a break. Let's take a break for, I see Jane shaking her head. We're going to have a little bit of disruption here. We'll come back at 8:30, okay? So break till 8:30. Okay? Meeting will return to order. Could somebody close the door to the, uh...
The party?
Yeah, the party? It does. All right, that's better. All right, we come now to minutes. We have one set of minutes for our regular meeting of July 20th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 20th, 2015.
Well, any changes? I guess I do have one. My name is a bit of vanity, but towards the end of it, my last name lost a T. If you could reapply that, it's the top of page three, but other than that, anything else? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion.
Motion carries with one abstention. We move to the consent calendar, and let me state, there's payables, payroll, and Agenda Bill 5095, grant and sponsorship request for Art Uncorked 2015 event showing on the agenda I have. A second item was added, which is Agenda Bill 5096, Calkins Landing Shoreline Restoration and Stormwater Project Bid Award. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'd like to take those two agenda items off the consent calendar.
We can do it in either order. So, both, the payables and payroll will stay on, and the other two agenda bills will come off and become the items of, first items of business, of regular business. So, with those removed, is there...
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll come to Agenda Bill 5095, Grant and Sponsorship Request for Art Uncorked 2015 Event. I'm told that Terry Mormon will have a word or two of wisdom for us on this. Welcome, Terry.
Terry Mormon, 3628 Seventy Second Place, Southeast Mercer Island. I sort of have to get my addresses straight. I'm just here, I've sent, you guys all have the letter that we sent requesting the support this, for the Art Uncorked again this year. Last year, we thought that if we had 300 people come, we would be a huge success. Well, we turned out to have 500, and it was rather overwhelming, but it was a great success, to the point where it was used as an example during the stakeholders' meetings of the kind of things that they wanted to have happen in the town center. As a side note, of that 500 people, over 20% of them came from off Mercer Island through some really wonderful social media advertising and word of mouth that I take no responsibility for at all. This year, we anticipate having more people. You all know that the Chamber is a very small organization with a really small staff, but we do have some wonderful volunteers, but that said, we can't do this on our own, and we can't fund it on our own. We're hoping to grow it, but right now, we don't have the resources to do it independently. So, we're asking for this money again this year. I don't anticipate that it needs, it's going to be an ongoing thing, but we're investing in the event. We're buying some equipment that we can share with other organizations like the Farmers' Market and the Parks Department, and they in turn are sharing some of their things with us. But there is a limited amount of equipment that's available on the island that we can share, so we're needing to get some of those things purchased. There's some other things like, last year, it got dark a little earlier than we anticipated downtown, so we're going to have to have more lighting, and we've been told we need to have more wineries because some of our wineries almost ran out of wine to sample, which is a good thing. But the bottom line is, because we have to expand our footprint, we also need to expand some of the things, the equipment that we're using, which is going to cost us more money. We have actively solicited sponsors from not just Mercer Island, but other places, and we've been successful, but not to the point where we can do it without a little help from you guys.
All right, thank you for that.
Do you have any questions?
Yep. So, two council members' questions, perhaps Mike, since you pulled it, you've got a, you wanna...
Well, no, I don't have, I don't have any questions. I mean, I have statements, I have a philosophy or a particular point of view, and that's why I pulled it. We're at that point.
All right, so questions. Benson?
Yeah, can you tell us how much money last year? I mean, it's great, I mean, I was there, it was very successful. Can you just give us an idea how much money was raised and what you anticipate for this event, this year?
We raised about $4,000 total. Not all of that became profit for us, and the money that we did raise went to fund scholarships and actually sort of keeping the Chamber afloat as well, so that we could, you know, grow and be more active. It wasn't a huge, if we may, we thought it was a big success because we had a lot of people, but financially, it was fine. It was not enough to fund more years. But we're hoping that it will be, it will grow.
Do you have a target for this year, Terry?
Of what we want to raise? I can't tell you that we do, I'm sorry. That's probably not good financial planning, but we don't have a lot of experience in this realm. This is, that was, last year was our first time to do it, and I think we considered the fact that we made money a really positive thing.
Other questions? All right, Terry, I think thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Back to a motion perhaps first, and then council member comments?
I move to appropriate, appropriate $2,500 from the Beautification Fund for a local grant to cover costs associated with the promotion and support of the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce and Mercer Island Visual Arts League-sponsored 2015 Art Uncorked Event as a Town Center Revitalization Program.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Mike, I'll give you first shot, since you pulled it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, you know, I say this in perspective of our planning session where the Assistant City Manager wrote a memorandum to the, to the council forecasting where we were with our, with our budget, and I say, I quote here, "This forecast has been projected at the end of 27, 982,000 deficit projected at the end of 2017, almost 1.6 million deficit projected in the end of 2018." What is driving these projected deficits? Simply put, annual revenue growth is not keeping pace with annual expenditure growth. I couldn't agree with the Assistant City Manager more, and that's, and this is an example of where, where expenses are growing faster than revenue. And the easy thing is to, is to, it seems to be the easy thing is to raise taxes versus looking and prioritizing our government services and making, so our expenses don't rise faster than what our normal revenue does through population growth, et cetera. So, and I don't see this as a priority of government, especially since it sounds like they made 4,000 last year, and 20, another 2,500, estimate 500 people, that's only an additional $5 to the ticket that those 500 people would be charged to cover this 2,500. And certainly, this isn't a priority of government. We're entering a phase where we're going to be a deficit forecasting. We need to kind of, the council needs to start reining in expenses when they're not the priorities of government. And you know that we have been spending money on many things that are priorities of government, because I looked at high priorities of government. All this stuff we're doing with the town center, that's important for the, for the future of this community, and I think our citizens expect us to make that investment. But I don't think our citizens expect us to subsidize wine tasting down in the town center when it should be a pay-as-you-go. You know, this is an addition, you can't, you know, in-kind requests for these things, event barriers, the staff, I'm sure most, most of this is overtime for our, for our police maybe, and for our maintenance folks to put the barriers and clean up and electricity. That's not a lot, but that's additional monies that that costs our citizens for something that benefits few, and more importantly, if it is of such worthy cause, the businesses down there can pay for it.
I'd like to point out something, if we're going around. The businesses do, do pay for this because the, the money would, for this sponsorship, $2,500 from the city, would come from the Beautification Fund. That money comes from BNO taxes from our businesses. It is a very appropriate expenditure for this kind of event. The Beautification Fund was set aside to, to be spent on town center activities, the median strips down the center, planting and beautifying our downtown, and this fits very well with the, the idea of economic development. The whole thrust of the town center visioning is to make our town center a vital place where people want to come. This event will do that. It is, we will, the city will be a sponsor of this event, like the other businesses that are stepping forward and sponsoring. I think it's very appropriate. We talk about economic development, this is a chance for the city to do something about economic development in our town center. I will be voting for this.
Benson?
First of all, I, I'm in the support of this event because it does promote economic development, it promotes the vibrancy, I know people don't like that word, but it promotes a vibrancy of the town center. But I think to, to Mike's point, I, maybe this is something that needs to be directed to the City Manager, maybe to, to Chip. You know, what is the in-kind contribution that's being asked? I mean, it's more than, we're being asked the $2,500, but what is the monetary value of the in-kind contribution that's being asked, so that we have a true idea of what the cost is to the city?
I can respond to that.
And you are?
Kirsten Taylor, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Last year, when we were looking at what these potential costs would be and seeing if we were going to charge, how we would, we would charge these to the project, the Maintenance Director told me that these services could be provided during regular business hours, so it really was not creating any overtime. Any police activity that was, that was there, were people who are regularly on patrol, so they did not require overtime for that as well. So, they're just part of the regular duties of the day.
Anyone else? Terry?
I want to acknowledge Mike's valid concerns about the imbalance of future budget years, revenue versus expenses, and that's not something that I would minimize or otherwise avoid a difficult conversation about how we ensure that we are running in a fiscally responsible way. But given that this budget is balanced, and we do have funds in the beautification arena, and this is an appropriate expenditure of those funds to support economic vitality, and also to gather the community together in a positive way, I'm very supportive of this, of this donation or grant.
Seeing no other commenters, I will bring this back to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Terry and others. We'll move, well, actually, we're gonna pause for a second because I intended to pause before we got started, and I missed it. The Chief of Police has informed me that I need to be a little more specific about hours for National Night Out tomorrow night. The barbecue at the Sculpture Garden will be 5 to 7. Police will be out visiting Neighborhoods 6 to 9. So, if you want to come down to the Sculpture Park, please come down, 5 to 7. All right? And with that, then we will move to Agenda Bill 5096, Calkins Landing Shoreline Restoration and Stormwater Project Bid Award. Chip and Jason? Mike, do you want to tee it up because you, you pulled it, or should we let them?
Let's have them give the presentation.
Yeah, for the record, Chip Quarter, your Finance Director, just to paint a little background here, some perspective, this is unusual. It's, it's unusual when we send an email to the council, and there's, there's always a reason for that. In this particular case, and it happened to be another one that preceded it not that long ago, related to Calkins Point, which is in Luther Burbank Park. This is Calkins Landing, south of I-90. And so, because of the in-water work window, okay, and, and because we won't hear back officially, formally, from the King County Flood Control District until November, we felt a need, in order to get this work moving along and get it done within, at least get the fish, the in-water work done within the window, we felt a need to move this as quickly as possible. Jason's here to address questions about why is the cost, the 76,500, about 25% more than what was originally budgeted? The good news is, we've, Madison's been told by the Flood Control District that they will cover that balance, they'll make it official November. If for some strange reason that does not happen, we can rely on their stormwater fund, since this is effectively a stormwater project, to make up that difference. We have an existing capital improvement project for the East Seattle Neighborhood, as mentioned in the Agenda Bill, that can cover that difference. Jason's here to answer any questions, and I'm also here.
All right, questions? Debbie, and then Mike?
So, you know, clearly, there's a number of projects that the, the city needs to pursue, some of which were fortunate enough to find external funding, and some were not. Putting this project in the scope of that entire bucket of prioritized projects, particularly around stormwater, where would you put this one?
For the record, Jason Kitner, Park Superintendent. So, there's been an allotment of money in this fund for, it's a member jurisdiction grant, for quite some time, and so, and I don't, Patrick's not here to answer the stormwater piece, but in terms of parks, this is high up on our priority list. We have a need in our street and parks, specifically along 60th, to make some improvements. This park matched the grant funding opportunity. It includes a substantial amount of stormwater work, as well as shoreline, watershed, salmon recovery work, and so it aligned perfectly with the grant. That's why we were successful in the $316,000 initial request.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So, in other words, in the event that something does happen and the money doesn't come through from off-island... come through from off-island resources, this would still be something that we would probably prioritize over a project that is currently sitting on our funded list?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Mike?
I'm curious about your conversation with the Flood Control District. Who's telling you that they're confident that the Flood Control District is going to authorize the money?
So, Elaine Summergrain, who's actually going to be the project manager for this project, she was on vacation last week. She actually had a conversation with the project manager from King County Flood Control. I can give you the specific name if I go back and look. But she had, it's the, it's the grant, it's the project manager who oversees the funding, the funds for our member jurisdictions. So, when we put together a grant application and sent it off to the district, one of their project managers reviews that, and that project manager, who's, used to be Ken Wright, I believe, he's since retired, and so a new person is in that place. We confirmed that we still had a $316,000 original allotment because such amount of time had passed while we were dealing with the SEPA appeal, and they confirmed that, and then we had the initial conversation, or the secondary conversation about funding the additional request.
Well, that surprised me, because I'm on the advisory committee of the King County Flood Control District, and that, that a staff has that, that a staff person has that authority, giving you the confidence that you're going to get the funds, is interesting at best. But, good luck on that. Or actually, a city manager, you might want to get a higher level of authority on that from the King County Flood Control District, because that doesn't seem right in my dealings on the advisory committee. Because I specifically remember going over this project and allocating this amount of funds for it, and they are strapped with, with money. So, $10,000, an additional $10,000 is going to come from somebody else's project, is the bottom line. So, one of the, so, Jason, tell me about this overage, and how can you get it back into, or what have you done to get it back into the budget that was allocated?
If, if we have the budget that was allocated...
What can you do on the project to make it pencil out? Nothing?
We would have to go back to the design and cut things out of the design. This project has been publicly bid. If you want to get it down to the $307,000 allotment, in the original budget, we're going to have to re-scope the entire project. It goes back to the drawing board. It goes, yeah, we have a starting place with the existing drawings, but we'll have to go out through and cut a substantial piece. And the, the concern with that is, this project is stormwater and watershed combined. If we start cutting things, then we may not qualify for a grant, which then means, which then means we're most likely coming back to the next budget process to fund this project with REIT money, or we're bumping another project to finish this project with REIT money, not through a grant, not through a member jurisdiction grant.
Okay, what about the, the sign? I mean, why couldn't you get rid of the sign? The contingency, something with the contingency?
The sign is a direct requirement of the King Conservation Flood Control District. They require, they require a public notice at the site showing that this was funded through district funding sources, so that's why it's there. The contingency is 10%. That's a pretty modest contingency for a project like this. It's not 15, it's not 20, it's 10% for a reason. There is, there is some unexpected work that has, there is work that goes underground where, you know, you're dealing with utilities. There's a 10% contingency is very moderate for this, very reasonable for this project.
Benson?
Just a couple of questions. I, I thought some of our other projects, we had used an 8% contingency, but again, albeit it's only 2%, but that might be another way to cut the cost if, I mean, obviously, in some of these other projects that we've talked about, 8% was deemed to be satisfactory. But, you know, again, I defer to you. I don't know if that's something that you might want to consider.
That's the exception. That is, we rarely do that. You're typically at least 10%, if not more.
Okay. That's, okay. A follow-up question. Jason, you mentioned that if we have to use the backup plan to finance the shortfall, you've already said that this project would be high in the priority of projects that would be deemed that we should do, but are we sacrificing some other project? You mentioned that we'd have to, we might have to postpone another project or something. Is there another project that would suffer as a result of having to divert $76,000 of the stormwater fund?
So, we'd have to bring Patrick in. Unfortunately, he's not here. But, so, we've already dedicated a portion of that project in case we need to use those funds. There will be a small additional request that we, that could potentially bump something. I don't know exactly what project that may be. It could be, it could be a stormwater project, it could be a parks project. Depending on how, if this didn't, wasn't successful, we'd have to evaluate and come back to you guys to figure out which, you know, what you deem appropriate, what you don't deem appropriate.
Let me add on something real quickly. The reason why we're so confident we'll get the additional money is because your residents paid this money, and it goes to account, there's effectively an Mercer Island account for this Flood Control District money. It's yours. It's ours. This kind of project qualifies for that money, and so it's not stealing from some other jurisdiction. That's why we're so confident.
I would also tie in...
Wait a minute. That's not right.
I would also tie in the fact that we've already been approved through the district for $316,000 for this project. We are simply asking for an amendment to that original project request, increasing the allotment request. So, they've already, they've already evaluated this project on the merits, and it meets the criteria. So, it's literally changing the dollar amount through the member jurisdiction grant.
Okay. Mike?
Well, I mean, with all due respect, there's not a Mercer Island account. I mean, it's, it's a, it's an opportu, I don't remember what they call it, but it's an opportunity fund, AKA peanut butter to spread across the King County Flood Control District taxing district, for those communities that don't have quote-unquote, one of the four watersheds that the King County Flood Control District was set up to, to address. So, I mean, it will take from another project. If, if we get this money, it will, it will take from another project. So, I don't quite understand, you know, when I look at, when I looked at the contingency fund, the sign, $8,500 seems very expensive for a sign, 1% for the arts, you know, that's $35,000, which brings us to about $32,000. You know, Jason, I find it hard to believe that we can't change the project in a, in a very small way to recoup another $32,000 and bring it within budget. Again, I'm saying this in light of our budget problems, our budget challenges, and just, that's our job, is to look after the fiscal health of the, of the community. You know, we make, we make change orders in the up, why we can't make a change order in the down? We make change orders in the up all the time. We should be able to make change orders in the down all the time to bring this project into budget at the beginning. Is this not possible?
No, I don't think it is possible. I'm not comfortable staying here and going through the bid specification, line-on-by-line, at this, without it in front of me, to say that. And what we run into doing that, if we, if we, first of all, we're not going to, we're not planning on using the contingency. It's there as a contingency if we need it. We try in our, we try absolutely in our hardest not to use this contingency whatsoever. The, the design cost for, the fabrication for the design does include design fabrication and the actual installation of the sign. It's, it's got to look visually appearing, it's got to have the King Conservation Flood Control District logo on it, there's some different elements that are required for that sign. As far as, you know, cutting line-on-by-line, there's just nothing, there's nothing, there's no extra fat in this budget, in this project, to whittle away at this point in time. If, if you start whittling away at things, you're going to do a stormwater piece, and you're going to forget the shoreline piece, which then again jeopardizes our grant opportunity. So, and, and same, same can be said vice versa. If you do the shoreline piece and don't do the stormwater piece, then we're non-compliant with our grant there. So, there's, you know, a simple picnic table that's installed for an ADA picnic table. That's an amenity that's not currently in the park, that's a requirement for us to have. So, there's, there's just not, there's nothing in this project budget that we can whittle away at, unfortunately.
Okay. Others? I'm looking for a motion.
I move to award the Calkins Landing Shoreline Restoration and Stormwater Project to Sierra Pacifica Construction in the amount of 267, I'm sorry, 263,436, including sales tax, set the project budget to 383,500, and direct the city manager to execute the construction contract.
Second? All right. Moved in second, a discussion. Chip, Jason, thank you very much. I think you're probably relieved, but don't go far, of course. Okay, discussion. Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move to Agenda Bill 5092, Transportation Impact Fees. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Bassett, council members. I'm Scott Greenberg, Development, your Development Services Director. And here we are again, talking about impact fees.
Mr. Terry, just got a question for you, Scott.
Scott, is it important that we go in the order outlining the agenda bill? Because I'm wondering, since we have people here who are interested in the school impact fee conversation and ordinance, if we could put those in advance of the transportation impact fee conversation?
The only, only reason is we have a consultant we're paying to be here for transportation.
Sold.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're doing our part to keep the budget just as low as we can.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, you've seen the first two slides before, but I just thought it, it kind of sets the stage for discussion this evening. I'm only going to show this once, I won't show it with each impact fee item this evening. Council had directed staff to look at impact fees, GMA impact fees, for parks, transportation, and schools back in March of this year. We brought you a information about parks' impact fees at your last meeting, July 20th. The council gave direction to complete Phase 2 of that work, which is a parks' rate study, parks' impact fee rate study. Tonight, we have Kendra Braylen from Farr and Peers with us tonight to give you a presentation on the transportation impact fee information and rate study. I will, am pleased to say it's less, less complex than the parks' impact fee discussion that you had at your last meeting. Assuming council gives direction to complete the transportation impact fee rate study this evening, then we would be back with you October 5th for you to review the draft rate studies for both parks and transportation. And then if you gave us direction to move forward, we would then move forward with proposed ordinances to adopt parks and transportation impact fees in November, with the Planning Commission potentially coming back to city council mid-November for first reading, second reading and adoption, potentially December 7th, and then they would take effect the middle of January of 2016. So, that's sort of the, the path forward we've got on this. And of course, whenever you get into public process, like the Planning Commission meeting or council, first readings of these ordinances, the time can get pushed out a bit if there needs to be additional work done. But that's the schedule we're operating under right now. And then for school impact fees, of course, that's on your agenda this evening for first reading, and then we would bring second reading back to you at your next meeting, September 8th, for potential adoption. If you adopt it on September 8th, the effective date of the school impact fees would be mid-October. So, with that, I will ask Kendra to come up and walk you through a presentation on transportation impact fees. Like last meeting, I would ask you to hold your questions until Kendra is done, and then both Kendra and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Welcome.
And I take it these Boy Scouts are here for the school impact fees. As a mom of two boys, I'm going to keep it quick, hopefully. It's also after my bedtime, truth be told, so, anyways, I'm going to fly through these first couple of slides, because it sounds like this is not the first time you guys have heard about impact fees. Transportation impact fees, similar to the others that you've been hearing about, these are one-time charges that are paid by new development, and essentially, they fund transportation projects that accommodate new development. So, we, again, this is just kind of a high-level study that we've done on a limited scope of work, so this is not a detailed rate study. That's something that we would be potentially looking at doing later, if we get your direction on that. But for this high-level study, essentially, how we started is we worked by identifying, what's the universe of projects that might be funded by impact fees? And we had three general sources of kind of projects. First, your 2015 through 2021 Transportation Improvement Program, so your six-year program, that's certainly something that we'd be looking at. The other is the May 2015 draft of your Comprehensive Transportation Element, so that's another, that's a 20-year source of projects that we looked at. And in addition, because that draft didn't fully anticipate all the projects that you might want to put in place if you adopt a Level of Service C transportation requirement, we had some, we worked with KPG, the consultant that's leading your transportation element, and we identified what those additional kind of Level of Service C projects are. So, from kind of that universe of projects, we kind of divided those projects into kind of four categories. First of all, we identified those projects that are not eligible for transportation impact fees. Those are projects, maintenance projects, that don't provide capacity for future development, those are not eligible per the State Growth Management Act. Secondly, projects that address existing deficiencies. So, to the extent that you have a Level of Service standard, and you're building a project because currently you're not meeting that Level of Service standard, and that project is, is needed just to address what we call an existing deficiency, those projects are not eligible for impact fees. So, there were a number of projects on your current Transportation Improvement Program, all those sources that I talked about that aren't even eligible, and so we took those off the top. And so, we, we were left with kind of three other categories of projects, and I'm going to kind of talk about those in a few minutes here. So, actually, what I'll do is just show them to you right here. First kind of category of projects here are Level of Service D motorized projects. And so, you can see, there's about $5.2 million worth of projects there, handful of projects, and these are the projects that would help you meet a Level of Service D standard. So, what we're also asked to look at is, what if the city, as a part of the comprehensive plan, adopts a Level of Service C standard, which is a more stringent standard, it allows for less congestion? And of course, that would lead to additional motorized transportation projects. You can see on the column to the right there, there's an additional $11.2 million worth of projects. And what I will say, kind of proactively here, we haven't done a detailed study of any of these projects. These were mostly just taken from your existing documentation. Should we do a full rate study, we'd be looking more careful into these projects, making sure that we understand a little bit more, we have a little more refined information about their project costs. So, I mentioned that there were three categories of potential projects to consider. The third category of potential projects to consider are non-motorized projects. And so, the Growth Management Act does allow that some subset of bicycle and pedestrian projects be considered for inclusion within impact fees, and primarily, those, those need-to-be projects that are within the right-of-way of streets and roads. So, if it's an off-street trail that isn't running along the right-of-way for, of, of a street and road, that's not eligible. But as you can see here, you've got a lot of shoulder projects that would improve, that would improve conditions for bikes and pets, and those are indeed eligible. So, to kind of summarize the information here, we looked at what would be the cost of eligible projects that you could consider if you structured your impact fee program in four different ways. So, the first way that we looked at is if you have a Level of Service D standard, and you do only motorized projects, and $5.2 million worth of projects could be considered. If you say that Level of Service D standard, but you also want to consider non-motorized projects, you've got $9.2 million worth of projects that could be considered. If you go with a Level of Service C standard, and again, this is something that you guys are going to be determining as a part of your final comprehensive plan, but if you have an LOSC standard and you only do motorized projects, you've got $16 million worth in projects. And if you do an LOSC standard, but you also want to fund non-motorized projects, you've got $20 million worth. And I think, you know, the big thing here... And I think, you know, the big thing here, point that I want to make is, this doesn't mean this is how much you're going to generate in impact fees. This is just the kind of universe of projects that could be funded and benefit from impact fees. So here, this chart here, it's the red and green, it's not quite Christmas, it's not quite a circuit diagram, but this is just kind of simplified how we structure impact fees. So it starts with kind of at the very top, those eligible projects. So obviously, depending on, you know, what universe of projects you want to fund, that's the starting point there. What we do is, first of all, we identify which of those projects, of those eligible projects are addressing existing deficiencies. To the extent that a project both provides future capacity but also addresses an existing deficiency, we do a little bit of math to figure out what portion of that project is addressing the existing deficiency, and we have to take that out of what's eligible to be funded. So staying over on the left-hand side of that column, kind of flow down to potential projects addressing growth. Then of those, what we look at is what portion of those projects are addressing growth generated within Mercer Island versus what portion of those projects are generated by growth, generated by other places off of the island? And what we do is then we strip off that portion of the capacity that's carrying trips that are not generated on the island. So an example of what those might be, it could be somebody who is on their way from Bellevue to Seattle, dropping their kids off at school in Mercer Island. The portion of their trip that isn't related to the island, the portion that's maybe starting in Bellevue, or the portion that's ending in Seattle, those portions need to be taken out. So then what we're left with is the portion of trips that are accommodating city growth and what you get to there, once you divide that by the number of trips that are being generated within the city, that's where you get your cost per trip. So let me get us to the punchline here. Depending on how you structure your program, we've done some kind of preliminary math here to determine that your cost per trip, essentially, what, and let me just back up to say, cost per trip, a single-family resident, and this is a cost per PM peak-hour trip, a single-family household generates roughly one PM peak-hour trip. So when you're looking at these ranges here, think about if you were to construct a single-family household, this is generally what the impact fee would be on that household. And so depending on how you structure it, could be as low as the $850 to $1,400 range, all the way to as high, at the upper end, to $4,300 to $7,200 per single-family household. And over the course of kind of a 20-year program, assuming that the city gets all the development that you're anticipating, the growth that you're anticipating within your 20-year horizon, your amount of impact fees that you would generate over that period on the low end, so at that LOSD motorized projects only, you're probably generating somewhere a little bit north of $1 million, to if you go with your most robust program, you're generating somewhere in kind of that $8 to $10 million range over a 20-year period. So lastly, Scott asked me to just kind of give you a sense of what a development application might be paying under these four scenarios. And so kind of in our scenario here, we've got 200 apartment units over maybe some ground floor, retail, and a bit of office. And so with this kind of development application that you're seeing right here, the amount of impact fees that would be funded would be ranging somewhere between $163,000 all the way up to $840,000. So I think that's about it. Step two, the next step, as we mentioned, is that these numbers that I've presented tonight are very preliminary. They're using kind of documentation that you have on the books here today. And if we go on with the Phase Two study, we'd be doing a more careful look, more refined project cost estimates, we'd be looking at potentially up to all four of those scenarios, and we'd also be kind of identifying what the administrative cost would be for the city. So that's it. Happy to answer questions.
One more. Scott, you've got some more?
Yep, just one more quick slide, like I did with the last meeting. Just teed up the two questions we have for council tonight. But I also wanted to indicate that, and kind of reiterate what Kendra just said, the Phase Two study, at the way it's set up right now, would look at all four of those scenarios. So council is not being asked tonight to make a decision on whether we do Level of Service C or D. That's a comprehensive plan decision. But we also believe that the rate study that would be done would be actually helpful for the council in maybe making that decision. Because in the future, you would get to see what kind of revenue might be expected from impact fees if you chose Level of Service C or Level of Service D. So we think that's helpful information for you. In the Agenda Bill, I did mention, although you don't have to make this decision tonight either, I'm just sort of teeing it up, that you might want to consider going ahead with the rate study, so you have that information. But then you might decide to hold off adopting the transportation impact fees until you make that Level of Service decision with the comprehensive plan. There's sort of a logic and a progression to doing that. You don't have to do that, because right now, we have Level of Service C, which implies the highest possible impact fee. So you could adopt impact fees based on Level of Service C later this year, and then if the comprehensive plan Level of Service decision is after that, and you do go with Level of Service D, all you would do is you would reduce your impact fee at that point. You wouldn't have to raise it, it would be going the other direction. But you don't have to make that decision tonight. Just something, I'm just kind of giving you the future of what might happen in this progression. So. The two questions are, should the impact fee program include only motorized projects or also include the non-motorized? Our recommendation is to include both. And then should funding be appropriated for Phase Two? And our recommendation is yes. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Pleased to have a much shorter and simpler list than we had at our previous meeting, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, council member questions before we get to answering these questions? Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this might be, Kendra, as far as the bicycle projects basically are, in general, are only valid if they're in the ROW, the right-of-way?
That's correct.
Can we look at that in more detail, Civic Two, some of the projects that we have on Mercer Island? So, I mean, I can see where we would have projects that accomplish the same thing as a bike path along the ROW, but would be a path that's not along the ROW.
Unfortunately, that is...
It's a specified rule that it's got to be on the ROW?
It's within the Growth Management Act, yes.
Okay. The next question I have is, you know, I'm very critical about people who forecast whenever, and they say if taxes go down, then revenue won't go, tax revenues won't go up because, you know, they straight-line it. So there's a cause and effect of us putting impact fees on development. Do we continue to say that growth will continue as we have forecasted today without impact fees? And then make the assumption that with impact fees, the growth will remain unchanged?
I have not done any sort of, I think it's econometric or whatnot forecasting, no. That's not something we typically anticipate. There are some studies out there that have been done that looked at the impact of impact fees on development, and it's generally been found that they don't have really much of any measurable impact. Admittedly, I didn't do those studies myself.
Okay, others? I have one. I missed, so I missed the meeting at which the conversation about Level of Service occurred within the context of the comprehensive plan. But what I did pick up afterward was that there was a possibility that we might want to consider a split Level of Service, where Level of Service in the town center might remain at the higher level, but we, in the neighborhoods, might drop it. So my question is, if we go forward as you have proposed, will we be in a position to contemplate that sort of outcome? Or will we be in a situation where we have to backtrack and redo studies because, or essentially preclude ourselves from having that flexibility because we didn't study something like that?
I believe the answer, and Kendra can correct me if I'm wrong, since she's going to be doing the work, what you have on the screen in front of you is a menu of projects. So if you decide that we're going to have a Level of Service D in the town center, then those town center projects would be on that list. And there may be additional projects needed on the right side to keep it at a Level of Service C on the rest of Mercer Island. So I think it's a menu approach where you can pick and choose at that point, because with the rate study, we would know how much of, how much of each project's cost is attributable to growth. And then you can just plug those into the formula as you see fit, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I mean, Benson, did you have one?
Yeah, if I can, back on that schedule, and we were talking about Level C or Level D. So you're saying that in this study, this Phase Two study then, so again, we haven't made a choice as far as what projects would be on Level C or Level D. So based on the study that Kendra would do, we could pick and choose, you would have a project and you would have a number under Level C and a different number under Level D, is that correct?
Yep. Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. I do have another question, though.
Go ahead.
So, you know, I'm looking at page 19 of your Exhibit Two, and I'm just curious, you know, because again, it's based on numbers that we, this is numbers from the Puget Sound Regional Council. So, I mean, again, I mean, how valid are these numbers? Or do we have to accept these numbers? Do you push back on these numbers? I mean, again, clarify that or help me out here.
Absolutely. And if I may, I'll chime in there, because I will say, city staff asked us about those numbers. For the limited scope that we're working on right now, we wanted to find something relatively defensible that we could work within and not spend a lot of time refining and trying to really, you know, vet the numbers as heavily as we would in a full rate study. Your question's very good. What we used was, we used the Puget Sound Regional Council, regional model, and essentially just said, all right, for a TAZ within Mercer Island, or Mercer Island actually, I should say as a whole, what is its estimate about the number of trips that are related to outside development versus within Mercer Island development? I know you're pointing at that 44% number that we have within there. For the full rate study, to make sure that it's defensible for you, we'd spend a little more time, doing a little more careful study to make sure that the percentage that we're using is about right. Now, one piece that I will say is that 44%, it's probably not going to move all that much. Might it be 54% potentially, or 34% potentially? But that's in about the right range that we're seeing for similar communities around the Puget Sound. Nobody's at 75%. So 44 is, it definitely passed the initial sniff test, but we'd be vetting it more carefully in the next phase.
Mike, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So how much does it, how much more does it cost to do the Level of Service C motorized, non-motorized, and Level of Service D motorized, non-motorized, versus just doing one of the categories? For instance, Level of Service C motorized and non-motorized?
I believe your question is, would our Phase Two study be less expensive if we were to do just one scenario versus four? I'd say we could definitely cut off maybe $3,000 or $4,000, because a lot of it is related to the project costing. But I'd say that there's a lot of kind of base costs, running the model, vetting it, understanding where the trips are heading through the model, that's irrespective of the number of projects we have. So I'd say it's not as much cost savings, it's not, for example, a quarter of the cost. But I'd say you could definitely trim off some if you were going to cut some of those alternate, or some of those scenarios out of there.
Okay. The next question I have is on the presentations. Do we need to have in this cost, an additional presentation to the public or materials to the public? Because I noticed that your cost estimate is a presentation of the Planning Commission and to the council.
I don't know if he wanted to feed in. I think he's referring to the meetings that we would go to, a couple of public meetings.
Your deliverables.
Oh, we did add one more.
We did, okay. Yeah, so we actually did add one more meeting that's not on here, and it was to be determined. So I was figuring first reading for council, probably not having Kendra here for a second reading, unless there were some issues. And then maybe two meetings for the Planning Commission if that needed to be. But we could also make it one other kind of meeting should council want to do something different than just Planning Commission and City Council.
Okay.
But there are three meetings.
You do have an extra meeting in there.
There are three meetings within this budget.
That's reading my mind, Scott, thank you.
All right, with that, we're out of questions. Looking for, oh no, I'm looking to answer these questions that are posed here. So we're asked, should the impact fee program include motorized projects only or also include non-motorized projects? Seems to me non-motorized makes a lot of sense. We've got a community that's in favor of more complete streets. I'm seeing nods pretty much all around. Okay, easy one. Second.
And the second question would go along with the motion, actually.
Yes.
I have a question. At what point will we actually make decisions about Level of Service? And what kind of information, new information will we have to make that decision?
I think the time, well, the timing's up to the council, since you sort of put the comprehensive plan and town center work on a pause. It's up to you on when you want to restart that conversation. But I think this, the additional information, what you didn't do when we started to bring the comprehensive plan forward to you, is you didn't really have that full conversation about Level of Service. So whenever that night is in the future, we would certainly have KPG there, since they did the modeling for our comprehensive plan. We'd have our city engineer there, and potentially, depending on timing, maybe we would have Kendra there if you wanted to also weave in the impact fee information. I mean, it could just be a transportation evening for the council.
And we could have a different Level of Service in town center versus the rest of the island?
Yes.
What about even parsing it further, like, you know, south of 68, a Level of Service? Or, you know, three or four different levels of service? Level of Service C and D in different areas? I mean, rather than just two town center and...
In front of Jane's house, Level of Service...
Level of Service A, yeah. I believe that's possible.
I mean, how complicated can it get?
Yeah, different levels. You could even, I think, pick different intersections that you want different levels of service at.
Okay, okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
I would be interested in a motion if someone wanted to make one.
I move to appropriate $25,380 from the 2014 general fund surplus for preparation of a transportation impact fees rate study by Farr and Peers.
Second?
Moved in second, discussion.
I guess the only thing I have to say is, through this process, it's the philosophy that growth pays for growth. And I understand the litigation part of it, so it might be growth pays for 75% of growth. But when I look at this, I don't look at the number or the amount that we're going to get, or the amount that it costs development. It is what it is, whenever you go through the process that you're going through. And then I hope that council members are like-minded, that growth should pay for growth, and it's immaterial what that number is. What the number is that it's going to cost new development, or how much we're going to get. It's more importantly that the process is followed to determine as accurately as possible what that growth is going to cost for future development on the island.
Benson?
You know, we keep on seeing the additional funding, additional future funding needed. This is on page three of the Agenda Bill. So this number keeps on growing because we, again, are doing more studies. So I guess, you know, my, I certainly don't want to keep on relying on the 2015 general fund surplus to fund these... fund surplus to fund these studies in the future. So I guess, you know, as far as the beautification fund, how much money is there right now? And, you know, is the money that's in the beautification fund, is it unrestricted? I mean, it's obviously, there's some restrictions for its use. And I take it this would fall within the parameters of the beautification fund?
Yeah, for the record, Chip Carter, your finance director again. What I would, and just to clarify, we're not using 2015 general fund surplus, we're using 14 surplus. There was about $97,000 and we're apportioning that out for these various impact fee studies. What I would propose, you see the $50,000 listed there for the additional town center work? All of your town center work, not impact fees, all of your town center work's been paid for by the beautification fund or by general fund surplus, okay? And so while I'm not crazy about tapping the beautification fund again, that's where I would go for that $50,000. The balance is in that, it's at least $500,000 and maybe $600,000 in terms of available fund balance in that fund, beautification fund.
Why, I'll let Benson.
I guess, maybe Mike's question will be, why do we have so much money in that beautification fund?
Because BNO taxes have been doing very well and we have not been spending it down.
Okay.
Well, that's kind of my question. Why are you hesitant about tapping into the BNO fund again for something that's as town center centric as this? And that's what it's there for.
Because a number of significant expenditures are planned. We're already tapping it significantly this year and next year, okay? And then this will be another, you know, we're looking at significant chunks of drawing down this fund.
Yeah, but if you keep hitting the general fund, then general fund's going to be low and then you're going to say, I need a property tax increase.
I'm trying to balance, I've got multiple plates spinning in the air here. I'm trying to keep the beautification fund, yes, it's a healthy fund balance right now. Will that continue on? We're drawing it down at a pretty good clip right now with our service packages that were approved for this biennium. And now tapping in then the additional work on town center that was previously unplanned, it's over and above your service package work, okay? And now this. So, you know, we're starting hitting it for, if I add up all the numbers, it starts, it's over $200,000 for the biennium, okay?
Anyone else? All right. All in favor of a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Scott and Kendra. We move to...
But can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
There had been a suggestion of moving the school impact fee item up. I think that's what I would recommend at this point and doing the comprehensive plan amendment at the end. And then that way, the folks who are here to listen to the school impact fees now can listen to them rather than have the comp plan discussion.
Okay. I saw that it's tied together, but the school impact fee discussion coming first?
I think that might give you better context. We had it at the very end because the district's attorney wasn't going to be able to be here at the beginning of the meeting, so that's why we put it at the end. But she's here, so.
Okay, very well. Then we'll move to Agenda Bill 5093, School Impact Fee Ordinance, First Reading.
And again, Scott Greenberg, your Development Services Group Director. At the Planning Commission's last meeting, they unanimously recommended approval of school impact fees and that ordinance is in your packet. There have been several minor changes made to that ordinance just to tighten it up a little bit. I do have a few additional changes. I'll go over at the end and I'll hand out to council. In fact, maybe I'll just give that to council right now. These are, these are the result of several questions we had from several council members earlier today. And I think these changes, they're pretty ministerial. The proposed ordinance would impose a school impact fee of $14,117.84 for any net new single-family home. And again, that is a house that is not replacing another house. So the tear-down rebuild that we're seeing a lot of right now would not be subject to paying an impact fee. But if somebody did, built on a vacant lot where there was no house, then that house would have to pay an impact fee. For multifamily residences, again, same, net new, multifamily residents, regardless of the number of bedrooms, would pay $4,284 to the school district, actually to the city for the school district. The Planning Commission's recommendation included a, I'll word it as sort of a strong recommendation, for the council to consider adding an affordable housing exemption. That's something that wasn't in the ordinance that went to the Planning Commission. In consultation with the school district, because that's something that we're, under state law, required to do for an affordable housing exemption, is make sure the school district agrees to it. We have proposed an affordable housing exemption in your ordinance, which I'll get to in a moment. So the staff present tonight that have worked on this is myself, our city attorney, Carrie Sand, Dean Mack from the Mercer Island School District, and then Denise Stifarm, who's the school district's attorney. So we're all available to answer questions. The policy issues for council discussion related to the proposed ordinance are, first of all, should the city collect, should the city collect a school impact fee? That's kind of the basic question and both Planning Commission and staff recommend yes. Second policy question is, should the city collect an administrative fee? There is provision in state law for us to collect administrative fees to cover our cost. We're recommending no. And the only reason is because it would be so negligible. We can only collect a reasonable fee, which has to be reasonably related to the actual cost of processing the impact fee. In reality, what happens is, impact fees, if you remember, are collected at the time a building permit is issued. We collect other fees at that time. It's just adding another line onto the permit tracking system and clicking on it to create the impact fee. Maybe a little math goes along with that if it's multifamily. And then that goes into an account. And once a month, a check is cut from the city and sent to the district. I'm not even sure whether a check's cut or it goes electronically, but that's it. Unlike transportation and parks impact fees where, give you a little preview, we will be recommending collection of an administrative fee. For parks and transportation, we actually collect the money. It stays with us. We have to manage that account. We have to account for those dollars. We have to do a report back to the council annually on how we're spending those dollars. That's the district's responsibility, once that money goes to the district. So our costs in administering this program are negligible, pennies. And then the third policy issue is whether to allow exemptions for two things. Staff recommended to Planning Commission an exemption for accessory dwelling units. One of the reasons is we try to use accessory dwelling units to create some affordability in housing on the island. They may not technically be affordable by definition, but typically they're less rent than you might find elsewhere. And we're recommending that exemption. And then we are recommending the affordable housing exemption. State law gives us two options. We can grant a 100% exemption to impact fees, but there's a lot of follow-up work and paperwork required in doing that. Most cities have gone with the 80% exemption, which is a new legislation passed several years ago. Arch was actually instrumental in getting that passed. And the 80% exemption, it just, the district just has to agree to it. There's no additional work that we need to do. While there is some additional work, Arch will help us with it in terms of filing papers on the title of the property which guarantees the affordability, just like we would do with any other affordable unit receiving public funds for the city. So we're recommending 80% exemption on affordable housing. So recommended motion is to set the ordinance for second reading at your September 8 meeting. But I would use the alternative motion and then with the proposed changes to Ordinance 15C-15 dated August 3, 2015, that are on your, the handout I gave you. And I'm happy to answer any questions and district staff would be happy to answer any questions, too.
Okay, questions? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott, what happens when you short-plat? How do you determine the unlucky plat?
What do you mean?
So when you short-plat, you're going to build a new home, so the fee would apply to one of the two lots.
So if there's an existing house on the property, is what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay, not just the vacant lot short-plat. It would be the first one in. So the first building permit application we would receive would be replacing the house that was demolished.
Makes sense, okay, okay. So you implied that the transportation fees, et cetera, would have an administrative fee because you're managing the money and whatnot, but not for the school impact fees because the school will be doing that? So should we not have a administrative fee because the school is having, is having to manage those funds?
I would turn to the district or city attorney to find out. I'm just speculating that we may not be able to collect an administrative fee for the district.
Dean says it's a piece of cake. He's got enough, plenty of time to manage this, too. Okay. All right. Just trying to help you out there, Dean.
Students in the economics class will be doing it.
I had this vision of Dean, you were saying the money transfer was easy. I had this vision of Dean being sent down to City Hall with a money bag and having to carry it back to district offices. All right. Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Oh, Benson, okay.
Actually, I discussed this earlier with Dean. I just want to, to raise the issue or at least ask the question regarding the impact, the averages that have been developed for the impact fees and what impact or what changes will occur if and when because of the Sherwood Apartments. And so I know that there's been, I shouldn't say concerns, but people have questioned whether or not the Sherwood Apartments will take, I'm sorry, whether or not the impact fees will take that into account and if so, when.
Are you asking about the fee that they would pay?
Well, I guess the rate. I mean, how's that calculated or taken into account?
It would be $4,284 per unit.
But will the percent change, I guess? As I recall, there's a percentage assigned. Am I getting that confused?
I'm Denise Stifarm, legal counsel for the district. I apologize, I have a cold and I messed up the late evening coughs. Let me try to get to what I think your question is. I think that you may be concerned with the student generation rate and whether if there are more students coming out of those units, is it going to affect the fee or is the fee going to accommodate that student generation rate? And so what the district plans to do is to annually update this capital facilities plan and the fees. And so as those units are developed, if there are more students coming out of those units than the district anticipates, that will affect the student generation rate, which would in turn increase the fee. Now, it could also work the opposite way. If there's fewer students than expected, the fee could go down. So it's something that the district will need to closely monitor. And I'm just going to ask Dean really quick, are there any of those units in, no?
No.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay.
But I think it just kind of underscores the need to kind of keep a regular check on what's actually going on so that the fee accurately reflects the new development.
So that, again, that student generation rate will be reviewed on an annual basis?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we set Ordinance Number 15C-15 for a second reading at the City Council's September 8, 2015 meeting with the proposed changes to, as numbered one through four on the sheet titled Proposed Changes to Ordinance 15C-15, August 3.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Denise, go home to bed. Get well. Dean, thank you for being here. All right. Move to Agenda Bill 5094, Emergency Amendment to the City's Comprehensive Plan to Adopt Updated Policies and Incorporate By Reference the Mercer Island School District's Six-Year Capital Facilities Plan to Support Collection of Impact Fees.
Once again, your Development Services Director, Scott Greenberg. This is coming before you tonight. I sort of call this a ministerial action only because if you would like to have impact fees adopted, you actually do need to change the city's comprehensive plan to support the collection of impact fees. The way the plan was written back in 1994, well, and updated since then, had a couple things that were really quite at odds with collection of impact fees. The first thing, and this is the Exhibit One, I'm going from here. It's not on this page, but there's language in the current plan that talks about district enrollment declining. And it's really hard to justify collecting an impact fee for a declining enrollment in a school district. So the purpose of this amendment is actually to update this portion of the comprehensive plan only. And what we've shown you here, kind of in the red slash orange, is that's language that you've seen before when this was presented to you back in, I think it was May. And that's as recommended by the Planning Commission. So what we're doing is we're simply updating the public schools section of the comprehensive plan to make a current. I tried to just focus it to just have a couple of changes, but it really didn't make sense when we're referring to old bond issues and don't even recognize that there was a current bond issue and all the construction and new projects that are going on. The items that are underlined or crossed off that are highlighted in yellow are changes that I've made to the Planning Commission's recommendation to, again, bring this up to date and then also to support impact fees. So for the schools, we recognize there's a fourth elementary school. We've updated the population number. Again, looked out into the future based on data from the district's capital facilities plan. Recognize that the district has prepared a separate capital facilities plan. We need to adopt that by reference. And then we get into the section on level of service. So as we were writing this first to support school impact fees, we thought, well, we're going to have to do this again for parks and transportation impact fees. So we broadened out the scope of what we were doing a little bit to also reflect council direction on what kind of level of service standard that you've directed us to use for parks impact fees, which was that expenditure per capita. So we've added that in, in that chart. We've referenced the capital facilities plan from the school district in this chart. Here's, this is language in Section Four, Capital Facilities Financing. The language actually said Mercer Island will not finance capital improvement through development impact fees. You have to get rid of that language to adopt impact fees. But then we added in language that actually supported potentially using impact fees, which is the underlined things here. Added impact fees as a possible revenue source on page six of that document. And then added a few policies under Section Five, Capital Facilities Goals and Policies. And those are the ones here, 1.16 through 1.19. And these are policies that are really necessary under the Growth Management Act to bring in the requirements of GMA on how the city uses impact fees. So there may be other changes recommended to these policies by the Planning Commission, but we're not asking you to adopt those changes tonight. I've taken them out of this document. So the only thing we're asking you to adopt that the Planning Commission sent forward is the public schools section. It made total sense to do that with my proposed changes. And then for the rest of... And then for the rest of the document, just adopt the new changes that are necessary to update the school information and provide these policies. I hope that's clear. But this is something you need to do. In terms of timing, the Growth Management Act only allows updating of a comprehensive plan once per calendar year. So if you would like to keep your option open to adopt the updated comprehensive plan in 2015, then you actually need to adopt this as an emergency amendment. Growth Management Act does allow several exceptions to that one-year cycle rule, and one of them is updating of a capital facilities plan. The other one is, it doesn't define emergency. But we believe the emergency here is the loss, potential loss of revenue, not only for the school district, but if the city adopts parks and transportation impact fees, you could potentially be losing revenue. If, for example, you adopted the comprehensive plan amendments next year and didn't do this work, then you wouldn't be able to adopt any impact fees until next year. So I think this gets your policy house in order. This has no impact, it has no regulatory effect. We can't go out and start charging impact fees tomorrow, but this gets you prepared to adopt impact fees at your next meeting. So we recommend that you adopt this.
Ready for questions?
Yep.
All right, questions? Let's just see if anybody else got one before you roll, Mike. I don't see it, so you are up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I kind of had a question on that emergency thing. And I reckon, as you state, it's not very clear what determines the emergency. And the question I was going to ask you was, give me the three bullets on why this is an emergency. So I heard one is because loss of revenue. And I have a question, is that a valid reason? And then what are the two other reasons? In the event that we did have to defend this emergency?
But just to be clear, you're arbitrarily deciding that there should be three.
That's right.
Scott's given you one.
I think there's one.
There's no real reason that he would necessarily have two others in his back pocket.
Maybe we ask Carrie to jump in here.
Yep.
Sure. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Carrie Sands, City Attorney. Another reason is timing. Scott talked about needing to get our policy house in order, and by passing this on emergency basis, you are laying the legal policy foundation that is necessary to then have a second reading on school impact fees on September 8th, like you just stated that you wanted to. So this allows the timing to move forward based on council's actions already taken tonight and based on the planning schedule. So timing is another reason.
But, Mike, I think, to jump in here, we do believe that the financial, the potential financial impact does constitute an emergency as that word's used in the Growth Management Act. So that's something we're comfortable with.
It certainly does. I also talked through that issue with the district's attorney, Denise Stifarm. She said that other jurisdictions have used the out-of-cycle emergency comp plan amendment process in a similar situation. Scott also looked at the facts with regard to how many building permits are in queue and expected to issue and the intervening time between now and delaying this until our normal annual update. And there were enough that we felt did warrant the emergency from a financial perspective.
And that's a valid reason?
Correct.
Another question that I have, the supermajority, now, we had to do a supermajority for the moratorium, but you're saying it's just a recommendation here that we need, that we have a supermajority?
Actually, it goes beyond just a mere recommendation. It's required under state law.
I'm just saying, so the packet is not right. The packet says it's a recommendation.
I believe that packet was saying it's recommended to pass it on an emergency basis, but to do so does require five yes votes, a supermajority of the council.
Then I have a couple questions on, let's see, PDF 55, which is on exhibit one, page Let me ask a question. It seemed like you, Scott, on the crossouts, I almost was looking at this comp plan as a historical document. And I was wondering why you took out some of the historical facts that would help future councils get perspective on why we are where we are. You know, it seemed like, after 10, it seemed like you only went back 10 years, for instance. Why did you delete some of the historical references?
Well, I think it was just the idea that comprehensive plan should be as current as possible and be updated. The current comprehensive plan that we're working from doesn't go away. I mean, it still would live, legally it does, but it would still live as a document, both on, you know, electronically and in paper. So, and we do this all the time. If I'm trying to understand the history of an item, I'll go back and search through different records, just like the public might be able to do.
The public doesn't do that, though. And we've got to keep in mind, the comp plan, I don't think it's for you. I think it's for the public. More importantly, it's for the public. Let's put it that way.
Right, but we have to have our comprehensive plan updated. And if there's specific language that you think might, you might want to have left in, we could, I'd like to know what that is and maybe we can figure that out.
Okay, well, I have, okay, well, you know, for instance, on page three, you can look at the second paragraph, that first bunch that you deleted. You know, those are historical references that gives one perspective and helps. I also had a issue with the next page, page four. And I, this wasn't historical, but philosophy, why you deleted, the district and the city will work together to review the district's enrollment projections, since that's always been a criticism that I've had between our cooperation, between the school and the city, is that I have always felt that we're on two different sheets of music as far as what our growth projection is and how they determine their growth projection is. So I guarantee you, if you looked at our growth projection times 2.54 people per household, that that growth projection is different than the school's growth projection. And you're just, by deleting this, reinforcing that, we'll continue with that mismatch. You see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do. I'm just trying to read that. I don't, this is not policy, this is just explanatory text. So there's no policy behind this statement. I will say that there's a new countywide planning policy. I don't want to complicate things. There's a new countywide planning policy that was just approved, that's out for cities to ratify, so you'll get more information about this, that actually has a required process for the city and the school district to sit down and do exactly what this says.
Okay, moving on, you know, page three, you talk about, I think it's important, you talk about the bond approved by 74 percent. You know, as one who didn't support the $200 million bond, I think it's important for reference to have the failure of the $200 million bond also on there, to give future people who read this perspective on, you know, folks, don't overextend on what you're asking for, because back in, whenever that was, 2012, the school overextended and they got their knuckles slapped. That's a suggestion to put that in there. And then also, I think on, let's see, on...
Yeah, that's where we're going to go.
On page 10, you talk about primary, secondary, I think it was page 10, primary, secondary schools. Do we also need to talk about, yeah, okay, it's 1.18. The city adopted by reference the standard of service for primary and secondary education levels of service. Don't we also need to include preschool, given the, I mean, next year, we're required to do preschool?
Well, this is, this references what the district is doing in their capital facilities plan. Those are the two metrics that they use for standard of service, it's just primary and secondary.
Okay. Well, so I think, as Noel points out, a significant question here, the timing is being presented as of significant concern to this, which is generating the whole question of an emergency measure. If, Mike, you have your heart set on wordsmithing, this will not be happening.
Yeah, I don't have my, I don't have my heart set on wordsmithing this, but maybe...
So then I might suggest we just get to a motion, and then if there are changes that really cause heartburn, we can try and do those by amendment.
Is there a way, how would we, how would we do that?
I have a suggestion. So some of these changes, you know, without thinking too much about them, they may or may not have merit. Other councils may or may, council members may or may not support them. If you adopt this tonight and then it becomes law, basically, you're going to see the updated version of this again when you come back to the updated comprehensive plan. This will then be the baseline you're working off of. And at that point, if you had additional amendments you'd like to make, I think that would be the more appropriate place to do it.
Okay, great, fantastic.
An appropriate place to do it.
Then I'll be more than happy to make a motion there, Mr. Mayor, if I can have that honor.
Have at it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an emergency basis ordinance number 15-6 to amend the city's comprehensive plan to adopt updated policies to support the assessment and collection of impact fees for transportation, parks, and school facilities, and to adopt and incorporate by reference the Mercer Island School District's six-year capital facilities plan as an element of the city's capital facilities plan.
Second.
And I heard, but I'm sure you meant 15-16, ordinance number 15-16.
Yeah, not so.
Yeah, 15-6 is what I heard.
Okay, sure.
Okay, just so we're clear on that. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Jane?
Oh, just, I have some suggestions for some corrections, which I will talk to you for the future. So I will make a point of talking about those things.
Just send them to me. If you have any suggestions for future, please send them to me and we'll get them teed up.
Right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott, we move to...
Thank you.
Scott. Yes. Other business, council member absences. We have Deputy Mayor Grous off at a wedding, I understand, on the East Coast, and probably happy to be there rather than here, but...
I move to excuse Deputy Mayor Grous from presence tonight.
Second.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Planning schedule, Noel.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple updates. One, we have, following council discussion, a meeting or two ago, we do now have slated an update on city council rules or procedure related to social media. That'll, we're working on that now. That'll come before you first time on September 21st. And then one thing, as you know, there's lots of public appearance tonight and discussion of MICA. I have not yet put the MICA proposed lease on the planning schedule. We've had preliminary discussions with MICA, and we're sorting out what the issues are that we need to talk with them about. And as we do that, then, and get a firm sense of what information we need and where we're going to go with next steps, I'll get that added to the planning schedule. But we're anticipating October at this point.
A question to the city manager. Can we get a good idea about the square footage that the proposed MICA building will impact? I mean, you hear some people...
Yes, yeah, one of the, that's actually one of the things we've requested for them is a site diagram that would give us that kind of information. And they're working on their architect to get that pulled together and get that to us. We don't have it yet.
Okay.
But yes, and then I'll route that to you.
There just seems to be a lot of incorrect information. I mean, I shouldn't say incorrect, there's just a lot of...
Yes.
...information out there, and it's unclear to me what is true and accurate, so that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Debbie?
What I would suggest is that perhaps we create a very clear link from the city website to the MICA site. There may be the point at which we want to add additional information, but just so that people can actually basically go back and forth between the two of them. Because what I don't want to see happen is that the city's actually hosting the MICA site. I don't think that would be appropriate. But I do think it would be very helpful to provide someplace where that link is clearly called out, because I know they do have a significant amount of information that we would want people to be able to see and review independently. Is that comfortable?
Well, I guess, since right now, we don't have a proposed, I mean, at the time we get a proposed lease put together and maybe teed up for council action, maybe that would be a time where we could say, if you want more information, here's this site. But right now, we don't have a MICA presence on our website at all, so...
Well, don't you have to be careful if you, if you make a statement like that? Aren't you kind of implying that it has the blessing of the city?
Not necessarily. I mean, we want to be, right now, we can't say that because we haven't taken formal action. And that's part of why I'm saying maybe, but I think if we...
Okay, point taken.
Yeah, if we describe it in the right way, I think that would be okay to link.
Still the MICA bandwagon here. Can we also, I mean, we're a community of laws. Can you tell us what the agreement was with the school on, when the recycle area went dormant and...
Yes, yes.
They were supposed to do something, there has to be some sort of...
Right.
...agreement with the council that you don't have to do it anymore.
Right, and we're...
You can't just ignore it.
Yeah, and we're pulling that, so we'll get that circulated as well. You're right. That is something on our list to look at as we move forward, talking about this.
Carrie?
Can I ask a different question about the planning schedule? So I know that the Best Starts for Kids levy is not calendared yet, and I know there was an independent question about perhaps having that conversation with pros and cons being presented to the council in October. So I'd like to suggest that if there was a way for us to move that ahead in the interest of now voting by mail, that taking that action, you know, in mid-October is not going to necessarily be an influential endorsement vote by the council. So to the extent that we can and do have that pro and con, I'd like to see it happen earlier if possible.
Yeah, and Carrie, I think you were, you were working with Cindy, Cindy Goodwin, our Youth and Family Services Director, was taking the lead on helping get that teed up. Do you have any more information on timing? Because I know there was a timing element that you two had talked about.
Again, Carrie Sands, City Attorney. The timing element that was critical from my perspective was making sure the local voters pamphlet is issued. And the reason for that is because for any levies such as Best Starts for Kids, there needs to be, or typically there's included, a statement from the pro and con committees. And we won't know if there is a con committee or opposition to the levy that's formally organized until we see that local voters pamphlet, at which time we can make sure we're compliant with state law processes for a governing body taking a collective decision and supporter against and making that overture invitation to both sides of the issue to come speak to the council. So we will absolutely make sure we try to give as much lead time as possible, and if time permits, we will try to have that for the September 21st meeting rather than an October meeting. There's also some thinking about primacy and recency and wanting to have the matter teed up for the voters close enough in time to the election where they actually remember it. So I understand there's those folks that vote very early by mail, and then there's other folks that wait till the last minute and might not remember if it happens at a meeting too far removed from the actual November election date.
Okay, Carrie, you said then? All right. Other planning?
Yeah, also, so, I don't want to bring this up without the deputy mayor being here, but at the next meeting, I'd like to bring up scheduling the moratorium on November 2nd seems as it, from a legal perspective, it doesn't matter whether it's scheduled early or not. At the next meeting, let's bring that up.
Okay, during scheduling, we'll talk about the next meeting?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Anything else? Planning, schedule, we've done, board appointments, we have non-council member reports. Jane, you want to go first?
Sure. Let's see, on July 30th, I attended the Mercer Island Parks and Recreation Department's volunteer recognition dinner held at Mercerdale Park. It was a very nice event. It was just prior to the Muslim Music in the Park concert. And it was reported that 7,300... And it was reported that 7,304 hours were donated in 2014 to the city by volunteers, and that translates into $168,000. So the value of the volunteers is just amazing. There were many long-term volunteers. Amber asked everybody to raise their hands for the duration of time that they volunteered, and as the years went by, fewer hands were raised, but there was one fellow who'd been volunteering for 40 years. So it was a wonderful thing, and I've harped on the fact that I don't think we do enough to thank our volunteers. So many of those programs would not happen without our volunteers, and I would love to see more volunteer recognition events like that. So also, I'd like to call your attention to the fact that Dr. Bob Coe died recently. He was a member of the Mercer Island City Council from 1988 to 1991. He was quite a prominent surgeon in the Seattle area, a World War II veteran, Navy Lieutenant Commander. He was preceded in death by his wife Bobby, and the service for Dr. Coe will be tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. at the Seattle Yacht Club. And one person wrote that Bob and Bobby were, quote, "tall trees now fallen," and they were really wonderful citizens of this community, and we won't see tall trees quite like them anymore. So, anyway, that's it.
Carrie?
In the interest of time, I just have one comment. I just wanted to express my appreciation to Councilmember Bertland, Deputy Mayor Grousse, and Mayor Bruce Bassett for your hard work with Sound Transit to delay the process so there's a community voice for Mercer Island with the important decisions that are going to be made and that will affect our citizens. So just a note of appreciation.
Mike?
Noel, thanks for those PowerPoints. It's, makes it easier for me, at least, to track along and recall when and what my questions are to be. The survey questions, I had a question from somebody that, the Town Center survey questions, were they going to get reviewed by us?
At this point, we, the council hasn't approved or funded going ahead with a survey yet, so while we're in this phase of assessing next steps, survey is one of the questions that's up. So we haven't, we haven't landed that yet.
Okay.
Or a process, if we are going to do a survey, what the process would be for finalizing a question set.
While we're on the Sound Transit thing, what that, what Will Kedlik, is that the guy's name, brought up, that might be something we do want to weigh into, that we're seven years down the road and they don't have a preliminary safety report, and that bridge is so vital to us. I'm looking for ideas on how the best way to weigh into that.
I don't have a lot of information on this, but what I have, the sense I have only is that from a reading of the motion, that he, his interpretation is not an interpretation that would necessarily be shared by others. And I, so I think, were we to want to head down that road, the first question we would need to address would be to arrive at our own interpretation of the situation such that we felt we were at a point where we could think about what we wanted to say based on that. He's, I don't doubt that he's, that his interpretation matches with his, I don't know, understanding of the facts, but as I, as I, my sense of it was that that wouldn't necessarily be shared by others.
Okay, and that's fair enough. So is the "we" the I-90 Steering Committee, or is the "we" in study session with the council, would you suggest?
I don't know that there was any "we" in my sentence. I guess "we" in this case is the council. I don't see the I-90 Steering Committee having a separate role in...
True. I-90 was for tolling, yeah, true, so...
So this would be something, if the council chose to take up that question, it certainly could, but, you know, I think it happens at the council level for that to happen. Benson, you want to, you got some thought here?
Well, you know, I, this, this matter was, I attended this meeting when this issue was, when this matter came before the Sound Transit Board. It might be useful, because the way that this motion was drafted about Sound Transit, it does raise a lot of issues, but when the discussion occurred at the Sound Transit Board, they basically, they meaning the Sound Transit Board, not surprisingly, basically said, oh, no, you know, it's, I think they sort of made it seem like the studies were much further along than what the motion actually reads. So I think it may make some sense to have Noel weigh in a little bit and try to get more information, because, you know, I think the mayor's right. I think people will have different viewpoints as far as whether or not this motion really accurately reflects where the state, the status of the process is. But I clearly agree that when you look at the motion, it does read as if there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but again, it may be just a poor drafting job of the motion. But I agree, I think that maybe we should spend some time just to get a better handle on what the situation is, because frankly, it's going to impact us for several years, and the question that was raised was whether or not, until this issue was resolved, whether or not they should delay closing down the center lanes. And I think that's a legitimate concern. But I think right now, I don't have the facts, and maybe, again, Noel, maybe you need to get in touch with Sound Transit and just get more information, and just really get down and find out exactly where this engineering firm is, and so...
So I just, there's a vast lack of knowledge here, and my part is, I guess is what I would say. But to Benson's point, I'm not sure I am in agreement, I wouldn't say that I'm in agreement with your interpretation of where the situation was. What I believe I heard was that the fundamental engineering questions were answered, and there was confidence on the part of the Sound Transit Board that the core underlying questions had been answered. What was missing was a great deal of detail work that still needed to be done going forward. I think we heard that in the Q and A of the meeting, that what was presented by Mr. Kedlik was that there were still fundamental, could this even work questions? And those questions were essentially answered as, no, we're not at that level of questioning, we're at a level of putting together a lot of the detail that still needs to happen. So to that extent, I think we certainly could go down this path investigating this. My inclination is to believe we've got some pretty big fish to fry ourselves, and this would, it's not clear to me that we don't just give ourselves additional headaches by going down this path, but if it's the will of the council, we certainly could add it to the list of things that we're trying to dive into with Sound Transit. So Benson, Noel, let you come back first, and then we'll go to Mike.
I, you are right. I mean, they, they basically said that the engineering, the engineering firm, I can't remember the name, but the engineering firm and Sound Transit came to the decision or conclusion that, to date, there was nothing that indicated that it was unsafe to have the light rail go across I-90 Bridge. But, you know, so they were pretty clear in making that statement. But again, when you, my point is, when you look and read the resolution, it makes it sound, you know, again, I don't know, that it makes it sound like it might be further, maybe worse than what they're, what they're saying. And my point is simply that maybe if Noel would simply contact Sound Transit and get reaffirmation, maybe a little bit more information that we could share with the community, it might be helpful, because I'm sure, you know, there's folks that read this, and they're going to think, looking at the resolution, it sounds like there's a lot of stuff that still needs to be done. And, you know, like, again, if you just read the resolution, you would probably reach that same conclusion, so...
I do think, this is also, I guess, the resolution that Lisa Beldon raised as a concern in advance of it being put to the board. And I think when she raised it, she raised a question of whether this was grounds for a delay of the process, but I think she was off by a year, if I recall in our look at it.
Yeah, I think, yes, that's right.
Because she was thinking this had to be done, that the closure was happening in '16, but the closure's actually happening in '17, so there's still actually a year of buffer between the time they expect this work to be done and the time when the road closure is forecasted to happen, so...
As I recall, I may be off a little bit, but I think, at least under the terms of the Sound Transit documents, this engineering work is supposed to be done first quarter next year, which would then, you know, then there would be some additional results of is the, you know, are there lingering questions with the bridge that could be looked at in advance of the 2017 date? That was my read on this when I, when I looked at it a couple weeks ago.
So can we, maybe what we do is we get confirmation of that first quarter 2016 deliverable, because, you know, if what it is is a matter of months to have a full airing not only for Mercer Island...
No, it would be more than a year, because it would be, it'd be first quarter of 2016, this additional engineering is done.
Right.
But the bridge doesn't close until middle 2017.
Yeah, that was my point, is it's the first quarter when we actually have more information that's currently, I'm sure, in the system somewhere, and Sound Transit and various other places, that information comes out, and I think then, based on what we see come out of that, not only would Mercer Island have a vested interest, but so too would many other communities, you know, who are looking at Sound Transit and everything it means to them. So I'm comfortable, you know, kind of keeping this at the forefront and getting confirmation that we would actually have that, I don't want to say engineering work, because I'm not sure I know exactly that that's what's going on, but a report out from Sound Transit that we can then go ahead and probe and query constructively along with the rest of the region.
Yeah, so maybe I'll confirm that I have the timing right, and then we can...
Well, I think we should, I mean, the interesting thing about Mercer Island is that we are, for just a town of 22,000, we pull a lot more weight than that 22,000. We saw that with, with tolling, and we can see that with, we could see that with the questioning of Sound Transit and East Link. You know, I'll remind you, you might remember Bruce, Senator Horne and I had a meeting with, with the Sound Transit Metro engineers just back in that room right there, and that was 18 months ago, and everything was fine, everything was fine. So 18 months, this motion comes out. And, you know, to say that there's no safety problems, they assure you there's no safety problems, you know, there are no safety problems at, at full speed, you know, you could say there's no safety problems, but it's creeping along at five mile an hour or something like that. So, and I think that's a true, I don't want to say game, but kind of a way that is interpreted sometimes. So I don't think anything bad can come out of the council leaning forward, especially since it wouldn't be that much work for the council, other than a study session. The work would come from Sound Transit presenting to us, and we would just have our questions there to ask, and of course, whenever you start asking those type of questions, that begets more questions and more interest from the public and a better airing of the challenges. So, you know, I, I don't have a problem with Noel making a few phone calls and then giving us an update, but I would hope that after that update, that we're leaning forward on asking some hard questions better sooner than later.
All right. Are we comfortable saying Noel's going to ask a few questions and return to us at the next meeting with a bit more information on this?
Yeah. Ed and I'll get him in the chair with the bright light, and then we'll get, we'll get the truth. It may take all night, but we'll get there.
Yeah. All right. Mike, anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Debbie? Benson?
I just came back to the Town Center Visioning, just to let everybody know, you may have been contacted, but our new consultant, Karen Reed, she's beginning to interview members of the TCLG. I was interviewed, I don't know how many other people have been interviewed, but she's going to also, I think, reach out to some of the stakeholders. So that process is going on now, and hopefully, you know, the pause that we're now experiencing will be lifted fairly soon, and we can start moving forward again.
Debbie?
I think I would add to that, and I did meet with her today. I understand that the TCLG received the report, I believe, some days ago, and that there had not been a significant amount of feedback that came from that group. And while I certainly appreciate, this is vacation time, kids out of school, et cetera, I would hope that we could follow up either with individual emails and/or a phone call, because I think at this point, going one or two extra steps to ensure that we get the feedback from that liaison group is so, so important in terms of respecting the overall volume of work done to date. So in short, let's not just leave it at an email and we didn't hear back, let's make that extra one or two steps, and if necessary, accommodate, just to really make sure we get their professional input.
Yeah, we've sent them a few emails, and I'm going to be calling them in the next two days myself to just say, just if you didn't see it or you've been out of town, you have the report, and please review it and comment, so...
Okay, coming back to me then, Terry alluded to it, and others have talked about it, but, so we, we did arrive at a motion successfully passed by Sound Transit's Board at their late, or their July meeting, thank you to brain going on the fritz here, that directs their staff to work with us, with Metro, with WashDOT, to conduct a public input process, what we've called an issue identification process. We will have an internal meeting of our subcommittee tomorrow, and we will have a first meeting with Sound Transit on Thursday. As Noel and I have been discussing, we're, the motion says come back to us at your September meeting with results, realizing that, not on our half, on our behalf, but on theirs, it's taken two weeks since the motion to get to the first meeting. We're thinking that we are going to be pressed to have all the work done by the September meeting, but we will start into this process and begin to message that it may take longer than that. So that's, what I'm doing right now is messaging to you, it may take longer than that. We anticipate an initial meeting with them that will be a sort of framing of the process to be followed in the not-too-distant future by a public input meeting, probably other public input process, the intent of which is to try and put our arms around the whole breadth of potential issues that are out there associated with the Mercer Island, Sound Transit, WashDOT, and Metro involved with this, such that we can begin to categorize and figure out where, where we're going forward and make sure we're not missing something along the way. So that is where things stand from that subcommittee standpoint.
So, so, let's see, we've done, they've done the EIS, the supplemental EIS?
They've done the EIS, they started in...
Supplemental EIS?
They haven't finished it, no.
But they've...
Are they still working, the supplemental EIS?
My indication is no, they kind of, they've kind of paused a bit, but I don't know for sure.
So this squishy date of September, I understand, of course, but when is, when is the timeline for a decision on the scenario, be that Scenario Six?
We don't have that.
We don't have that.
So September will be a reiteration of what the issues are?
It's, it's meant to be a reiteration of the issues and a proposed path forward towards dealing with the issues, which in most cases will be, I mean, so for instance, bus intercept, we've, we've already said, we think that the next step ought to be that you go back and re-study other alternatives to Mercer Island. So I would anticipate that that's the outcome we end up at on that one, but I want this public process to take place and for the, you know, for us to make sure we've got all the input before we actually land on that or some other step going forward.
It may be a function of semantics, but I think it does go beyond reiteration, because reiteration implies that we've already done a thorough vetting of process, and we're going back and revisiting it. For me, what it is, is making sure that we actually now do what is a substantive outreach to the community as a whole to identify issues. They may well have surfaced already, but there may be... may well have surfaced already, but there may be others that haven't surfaced yet. You know, when I think back to I-90 tolling, some of the fantastic thinking and creative solutions that came out of the community were very much what landed in the final resolution and discussion. So it's reiteration of some things that have been tabled, but also very much an open door to ideas or issues, concerns, impacts that have not yet been considered. So it really does require the best of the community as a whole.
Okay, so that is it for me. Anything else for the good of the order? With that, then, we are adjourned. Thank you.